And work and come to enjoy a great soccer game and soccer team right in their own community. Now we've changed the game.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for taking a chance and seeing the value of our community. Thank you for realizing that this is going to help put South LA on the map.
Expected to open in time for the 2018 soccer season, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti also wants the Bank of California Stadium to host the 2024 Olympics and the 2026 World Cup, should LA receive the bids. He's pushing for transportation improvements now in preparation.
The Expo Line is the best way to come right here to this stadium. And Measure M this fall will allow us to get that job done. Finish our subway lines, finish our light rail to the airport, finish those things, improve our freeways and get that job done.
In Exposition Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The project will also add 100,000 square feet of new restaurants and a soccer museum. Well, from soccer to basketball, an LA Lakers legend heads for retirement with a noisy farewell from the city. LA City Council members have designated a Kobe Bryant Day. Anna Marcos brings us more from the event. Anna?
Yana, what a day. City Council had never seen so many people. There were hundreds here and even at this private event, fans are still waiting, hoping to get a glimpse of Kobe. Earlier in city council chambers, a false alarm as eager fans mistook Councilmember Curran Price for the legendary former Lakers icon Kobe Bryant. But Kobe Bryant finally made his grand entrance on a day that would be named after him for all time. August 24th is now Kobe Bryant Day in the city of LA to commemorate the jersey numbers Bryant wore during his 20 years with the Lakers before he retired this year, number 24 and number 8.
Kobe Bryant's talent didn't make him great. Kobe Bryant's legendary work ethic made him great.
I hope that August 24th and this day becomes a celebration of passion, hard work, dedication and mentorship.
I love Kobe, so the greatest player of all time, um, best Laker ever.
Okay, who's number one and who's number two as far as fans?
She's number one, I'm number two.
For city leaders, the name Kobe Bryant and the Lakers brought something special. Prestige for LA with seven NBA championships and five wins, along with unity among Angelino fans.
Kobe Bryant has taught all of us in Los Angeles that this city has a fighting spirit.
When Kobe Bryant and the Lakers were playing, we were all Angelinos.
But the former MVP is more than just a basketball legend. He is also a philanthropist. He and his wife donate time and money to causes for youth and the homeless.
On behalf of the 60,000 people that tonight in LA County will sleep on the streets, I want to say thank you because you recognize their plight before a lot of us. We are late to the party.
On his last Lakers game, Bryant scored a legendary 60 points and he doesn't plan to slack off. Among his retirement plans, new business ventures, a strict workout regimen to stay in shape and a new addition to the family.
We are expecting another baby girl.
Kobe Bryant, LA wishes you well in your new game plan. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Bryant says he may also try some new things such as skiing, surfing and skydiving. While if you transfer between bus and rail in Noho, you know how dangerous the switch can be. Until recently, you had to cross a busy street to change lines, but not anymore. Gil Reyes shows us a new pedestrian tunnel that's making commutes a lot safer.
It used to work like this. Transferring between the orange bus line station to the red line rail stop in North Hollywood meant crossing the street first. And not just any street, Lancashire Boulevard, one of the busiest thoroughfares in the 818. But those days are over.
Now they have easy access. It's going to speed up travel across the valley. It's really going to be another step forward, I think, in the usefulness and ease and speed of mass transit through the San Fernando Valley.
Metro celebrates the opening of a 150-foot-long pedestrian tunnel linking the two lines in North Hollywood. The underground walkway is expected to shave minutes from your commute. It took two years to build and cost $22 million.
When you go to the voters and you say, "We want you to tax yourselves, to invest in your own communities," you take a risk because you don't know, will they open? Will they be successful? Will they be on time and on budget? And it is a wonderful feeling to see that we're helping manage an MTA that delivers on time, on budget, is being able to protect the community, improve our roads and give people more options.
Mayor Eric Garcetti is asking us, the voters, to approve a half-cent sales tax increase this fall to fund even more transportation-related improvements. In North Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
If approved, your tax dollars could help build some 40 projects over 40 years, including a rail tunnel through the Sepulveda Pass, linking the valley to the West Side. Well, from making your commute safer to making it a lot cooler. And if you ride the bus, you know how hot it can get waiting for it, especially in the summer. But the city has a plan to make the experience more comfortable, especially for older citizens prone to heat stroke. Gil Reyes has more. Gil?
Yes, Yana, this bus stop on the corner of Eagle Rock Boulevard and San Fernando Road is one of the more popular bus stops here in the community of Glissell Park. A lot of the reason is new school and the new apartment complex built nearby, just within walking distance from here. So ridership is not a problem. What is a problem is the heat, specifically the sun that's bearing down on hot summer days like today. But the city has a plan that's made in the shade. Waiting for the bus can be especially unpleasant for Margaret Chang when the heat is on. Yeah, what do you like to see here?
Benches, a shape over the bench.
Her bus stop in Glissell Park has some shading on the southbound side, but none on the northbound side. And she's headed north. There's also no seating.
If I sit over there, I cannot see the bus. I would miss the bus. So I would like that benches for a long time, a shape over the bench, even better.
She will soon get her wish. The city breaks ground on a 20 by 50-foot transit pavilion with big canopies to help beat the heat, the rain and more.
We're going to have security lighting. We're going to have benches to while you wait for the transit and all of this then surrounded by drought-tolerant landscaping.
The beautification aims to increase the comfort level of seniors, also new riders like tenants in recently-built apartments and students from Sota Mayor Learning Academies. Councilman Gil Sadio says more development is planned.
I envision, you know, elegant housing down the road, affordable workforce, market rates. We need housing in the city and this is an area where we can build without displacement.
And building those projects near transit stops to encourage more use of public transportation. But it has to be comfortable.
Shade and covering, uh, I think it's going to mean so much for the community.
In Glissell Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city hopes to complete renovations next summer. Turning now to LA World Airport's own modernization program at LAX, it's a multi-billion-dollar windfall for LA and you just might have a chance to cash in if you're a small business. Anna Marcos tells us about LAWA's unique offer to small business owners.
Inclusion is the name of the game as LA World Airport launches its $5.5 billion modernization program, one of the largest construction projects in LA history. And LAWA leaders want every small business owner in LA to get a piece of the pie.
What we're hoping is that the local small businesses that attended this forum today will have opportunities to meet with the potential prime bidders on this contract and will be getting on their teams.
Small business participation, diverse business, minority business will be highly encouraged.
700 business leaders networked and mingled at this small business forum at LAX. The first project up for bid will be the Automated People Mover, the centerpiece of the new LAX project, which will move people throughout the airport without the need for cars. The jobs up for grabs include construction, design, engineering, finance, landscaping, maintenance operations and much more.
We look forward to you bringing that creativity and ingenuity, bringing something new and something different for us to build upon here.
LAX is doing something that's never been done. It's not only encouraging and practicing diversity in its hiring, it's demanding it from all its contractors and subcontractors as well.
Absolutely, it's very helpful. We've been tracking these projects and trying to go after that, trying to collect as much information as we can.
LAWA leaders say small businesses don't always have it easy getting in on airport bids, but they hope their new all-inclusive push helps build not only a better, less congested airport, but a better and economically stronger LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
LAWA leaders say they've put policies in place to make sure small businesses are involved in this project. For more information, visit connectinglax.com. And if you're a small merchant in LA that flies the rainbow flag, then you may want to listen up. Anna Marcos reports from the LA Times LGBT Forum on some changes that could help boost your business.
If you're gay or lesbian, there's probably never been a better climate to start a business in LA. One panelist at the LA Times LGBT Business Forum touched on new state laws such as AB-53, which help improve the bottom line for the rainbow fly community and their businesses.
The insurance companies in the state of California report in their minority spend how much is going to LGBT businesses and that has taken the numbers from six figures to seven figures.
Sometimes it's always about gay pride and it's all great, but let's, let's talk about the power of our purse in this community and how we are a driver of the economy.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell talked about his Open for Business Initiative, which will help lower permit fees for small businesses, speed up the process for merchants to renew their permits and offer case management services for small business.
In Los Angeles, three-quarters of employees work at small businesses. So why on earth aren't we prioritizing that? Because that's, that's our economy. That's the backbone of our economy.
Under state law, you can even get certified as an LGBT business. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
An agreement years in the making has finally been reached between LAX and residents who live near the airport. Another major corridor in LA gets the beauty treatment and some kids in Silmar have some fun with LAPD officers while learning important life lessons. All these stories in City B. The city of Los Angeles and a group representing residents who live near LAX have reached an agreement that will put an end to lawsuits and disputes over a proposal to move the north airfield runways 260 feet closer to residential neighborhoods. The agreement will require that alternative safety measures be taken before airport officials can consider relocating the runways. The agreement will allow major modernization projects at Los Angeles International Airport to continue, including a people mover and a rental car center. Officials said this ends a long war between residents and LAX.
Today, we're at a day where there is peace and a significant promise of progress ahead.
Nearly 100 community members came out recently to help beautify Western Avenue as part of Mayor Eric Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative. Volunteers painted six new murals, picked up trash and pruned landscaping. City officials said that cleanup and artwork will not only benefit local residents, but all LA residents.
As they're driving home, sometimes in traffic unfortunately, they can see the beautiful artworks on the wall, the beautiful quotes from our philosophers, from thinkers, great thinkers. So we could at least add a little bit of sunshine in their drives.
The annual LAPD Baseball Swing-a-thon kicked into high gear recently, bringing together kids in Silmar and LAPD officers for a friendly game of baseball and other fun activities. Officials say the event promotes a positive lifestyle, physical fitness, sports and teamwork. The Swing-a-thon includes a baseball skills clinic given by the law enforcement teams, a rock climbing wall, extreme obstacle courses and rob contests for big prizes. Kids also recited the Just Say No pledge, a promise to say no to drugs, gangs, crime and bullying.
They help out a lot in the community and then they give them really good advice to grow, you know, no drugs, no, no crime, no bullying and all that. And then they need to learn. So it's very positive for every kid, especially mine.
And as you just saw, baseball is a great American tradition that brings communities and families together. Spending time playing catch and hitting baseballs with your kids creates lifelong memories. But if you're in the military, you know how fleeting those times can be, specifically when duty calls. But the LA Dodgers are helping to make the grief of military deployments a bit easier. Gil Reyes explains.
Throughout its history, baseball has forged bonds between fathers and sons, all family members really, from youth players to team moms to siblings in the stands. But for military families, deployment separates and rains out those cherished moments when everyone's together.
I mean, when I served in the Gulf War, I mean, it's, it was rough out there. I mean, I missed childbirth with my first kid and just for, just Dodgers even and Cal Ripken to either just recognize what we did for our country to allow other kids like this to do this, just great.
The Cal Ripken Senior Foundation offers this free baseball clinic to 175 kids whose parents serve or have served in the US military. Some of the kids don't have dads around to teach them how to hit, throw and field because they're on duty. So LA Dodgers players like JP Howell and Bud Norris fill in to help out for a day at the Dodgers Youth Dream Field at Belvedere Park in East Los Angeles.
I mean, this is what we do with the foundation is giving kids opportunities they may not otherwise have. And one of our focuses, along with MLB Players Trust, is focusing on the military youth and really getting them involved.
Seems like a no-brainer, right? I mean, this is after all, America's favorite pastime, so why not give back to the military men and women and their families who helped make America so great? This, today, this is what it's all about.
Absolutely, you know, my father, my grandfather served and knowing what that meant to me and to my upbringing and childhood and to know what our servicemen and servicewomen today are just so important in our livelihood and we can't thank them enough. Words are not enough to give back to their kids and to see them out here and too, and a couple of handshakes, it's really worthwhile and just makes everybody feel good.
Some servicemen, lucky enough to be in attendance, expressed their gratitude for this free training seminar for their kids.
It's a really special thing. I'd really like to thank the Dodgers for putting this event together.
It's a great way, you know, for military families to feel appreciated.
While spending some family fun time. At the Dodgers Youth Dream Field at Belvedere Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
All 175 kids also walked home with free t-shirts, baseballs and gloves. While growing up in a disadvantaged neighborhood can be tough, many times kids get caught up in a vicious cycle of violence and crime with no way out. But one program is hoping to change that by getting young people in East LA on the right side of the law. Anna Marcos has more on a summer youth employment program at the LAPD's Hollandback Division.
How do you explain the shooting death of a 14-year-old boy by police, even if justified, to a group of young people from the projects? Well, how about hiring some of them for the summer and letting them hang out and work side by side with the cops?
We want to give them some work experience. We want to continue to build relationships with the youth of the community.
This is the new summer youth employment program at the LAPD's Hollandback Division. And boy, do these kids have burning questions for the cops, such as what did happen in that recent police shooting that left 14-year-old Jesse James Romero, a gang graffiti suspect, dead in Boyle Heights.
The individual fired at the officers and then the officers returned fire. And it turned out that this, this individual was 14 years old. He would have been 15 this month.
The 32 kids in the program learn what police go through in making split-second life and death decisions every day. In the meantime, they earn their pay doing everything from washing cars to filing paperwork.
It's more like an opportunity to like get to see what they do on a daily basis, how, how they quickly answer the calls, they get on their vehicles and run out and it's really, it's crazy.
The program is a joint effort with the Housing Authority of the city of LA to give kids from the Ramona Gardens housing project a chance to forge new relationships with those who protect the law.
I grew up here around all Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights. Where I grew up, it was more like, okay, LAPD them and there was us. So it wasn't, we wouldn't really interact. And I feel like now that I've got to know officers, they're also people, they're, they're normal.
The kids are about halfway done through this program and once they're done, there is another perk waiting, job references from no less than the LAPD.
It does take a lot of work to, whatever you're going to do in life, it takes a lot of work.
Police hope it leads to a perk for them as well, better relations with the future leaders of their community and fewer scenes like this. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The kids in the program are in high school and college. The only requirements are that they are between 14 and 21, live in the Ramona Gardens project and are ready and willing to work. Well, the LAPD is also putting kids to work, but their focus is on attracting and recruiting more girls to the department and it starts with camp. Gil Reyes has more.
Lean farther back from the ladder. There you go.
No guts, no glory for about 100 teenage girls chasing a dream.
I want to be a firefighter.
Why?
I always wanted to be a hero growing up.
But to get there, they'll have to be as good, if not better, than the guys at climbing ladders, dousing flames and saving lives. Welcome to the first-ever LA City Fire Department Girls Camp, a two-day introductory seminar in San Pedro to help entice more young women to join the LA City Fire Department.
That is an area that we need to improve upon. Right now, we have about 3%. It's about 100 females. Our goal is to double that number and I think we're well on our way towards accomplishing that.
Female firefighters from Seattle to San Diego help demonstrate what it takes. For starters, they'll have to strap on 70 pounds of heavy gear for a typical firefight. These young women, ages 14 to 18, say they're determined to be first responders. Helping them after today are firefighter magnet programs. You'll find them at Wilson High School in El Sereno and Banning High in Wilmington. There are also youth fire academies at several fire stations to participate in throughout the year.
So the goal is after this camp today, to feed them into one of our various youth development programs so that they stay learning and active.
And dreaming big, to eventually be where usually the boys are, in a dangerous but rewarding career, helping others. In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Young men and women ages 14 to 20 can also take part in the City Fire Cadet Program. It could light the spark to a future career. Log on to firecadet.org for info. If you love jazz, then you're in the right place. No other city has more jazz history west of Chicago. So every summer, LA hosts a concert celebrating those sweet sounds from Central Avenue. Gil Reyes shows us.
At 85 years young, jazz legend Kenny Burrell shows us he's still got it. Burrell, one of the headliners at the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. From the 1930s through the 1950s, Central Avenue was the epicenter of West Coast jazz. Artists who passed through include Duke Ellington, Billie Holiday and Charlie Parker, to name a few. Also Ernie Andrews, who at 89 years old, still performs to this day. During their heyday, they entertained audiences here at the legendary Dunbar Hotel.
Central Avenue was the spot where African-American performers came when they came to perform in Beverly Hills, when they couldn't stay in the hotels in Beverly Hills, they came to Central Avenue.
We celebrate that history, we celebrate that legacy, but also recognize and realize the cultural diversity that exists today and we want to celebrate that as well. And we think music is the best way to do that.
Over two dozen acts performed on the festival's 21st anniversary. On Central Avenue, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Jazz legends in the making like 19-year-old Ray Goran and 20-year-old Aaron Shaw also performed. Well, it's a party for your taste buds during a fine food and wine tasting, Navy vessels flex their military might during Fleet Week and a Beatles exhibit that'll take you back in time. All this and this week's things to do. Labor Day weekend just got tastier. Food lovers get ready to indulge in the ultimate food tasting experience. LA Times is hosting its annual festival celebrating LA's culinary delights. Paramount Studios will be transformed into an elaborate pop-up block party featuring tastings and wines from some of the best restaurants in the city. It all takes place on Labor Day on the Paramount Pictures Studio Backlot. For more, visit events.latimes.com/taste. LA Fleet Week is a free public event at America's number one port, featuring guided ship tours, military and aerial demonstrations. Entertainment includes live music, educational programs, fireworks and food trucks. Fleet Week is an annual patriotic tradition where active military ships recently deployed in overseas operations dock in a major US city for one week. This year marks the first time Los Angeles has hosted an official Fleet Week event. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. Ladies and gentlemen, The Beatles brings us back to the early 60s when rock and roll was re-energized, some say saved by four lads from Liverpool. On display at the Grammy Museum are many Beatles-related pop culture artifacts from the period, as well as correspondence, instruments, posters, photographs, interviews, interactive displays and an oral history booth in which visitors can leave their own impressions of The Beatles. Check it out at the Grammy Museum, July 1st through the 5th. For more, visit gramymuseum.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition, but before we go, a correction on a story we aired during the week of August 13.
Sergeants, please call the members. Members, please report to the council chambers. Okay, good morning. Okay, good morning, good morning. It is Wednesday, August 31st. I'd like to welcome you to Los Angeles City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonnabus, Gino, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weesar, Carrasco, Corian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, Fuentes seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez moves, Weesar seconds, next.
Mr. President, Department of Building Safety recommends that Item 1B be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid in full, and that Item 1C be reduced to $3,220.44 in as much as the lien was partially rescinded.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 18 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, sir. 1, 2, 3, 9. That's it, sir. 1, 2, 3, 9.
1, 2, 3, and 9. Okay, let's prepare to vote. We'll hold those items. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read, and let's reconsider later today with 12 members.
Thank you. Okay, we're joined by Mr. Carrasco, so we're at 11. Let's move to the next section of items.
That brings us to Items 19 through 31. They're items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, 19 through 31. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 20 and 26 called special.
20 and 26 for Mr. O'Farrell. I don't see any other specials. Let's prepare to vote.
Mr. President, I am told that Items 19 and 22 should be held on the desk for an amending.
Okay, let's include those as well, and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 32 through 42. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items will be before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir, on Items 32, 33, 39, 40, and 42.
Okay, let's hold those items.
Want to call 41 special?
41 special. So does that leave anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll, let's close the roll, and let's tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, Items 43 through, excuse me, 43 through 45 are items for, scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
At this point, I would say yes.
Very good, sir. That brings us to presentations or items called special.
Thank you very much. I'm going to look over, to my left, at Mr. Buscayeno for a very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we begin our presentation to celebrate L.A. Fleet Week here in the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the National Anthem, which will be sung by the USO Troop. Let's hear it for our USO Troop. Wonderful performance. And we have one additional performance. Let's hear it. Yeah. Yes. Wow, so proud to be an American. Thank you so much, our USO Troop. We appreciate your presence and your amazing performance. Thank you so much for joining us. Colleagues, we're here to kick off our inaugural L.A. Fleet Week here in the city of Los Angeles and along our L.A. waterfront. Today, we have an opportunity to honor and welcome members of the United States Third Fleet to Los Angeles for our first-ever Los Angeles Fleet Week. And standing with me, help me welcome Vice Admiral Nora Tyson and Rear Admiral James Bynum, the Triads from the USS America, and the USS Wayney Meyer, and Third Fleet Carrier Strike Group 9, and U.S. Coast Guard personnel. Now, give them all a round of applause and welcome them to the John Ferraro's chambers. Thank you so much. Our city is so honored and privileged to have you all here today on this special occasion. And throughout our country, the United States Navy has over 300,000 active-duty personnel and more than 100,000 ready reserve. Just yesterday, we stood with one of our own naval reserve officers, our own mayor, Eric Garcetti, as we welcomed both the USS Wayney Meyer and the USS America onboard the battleship Iowa. With 275 deployable battle force ships, the United States Navy is a force to be reckoned with, keeping us all safe every hour of the day. Whether it's a domestic disaster or a global emergency, the United States Navy is there to provide both humanitarian efforts and disaster relief to the most vulnerable across the world. And it's with great, it's that great work that we celebrate at the L.A. waterfront this week. The inaugural L.A. Fleet Week gives every Angeleno the opportunity to thank our sailors, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen for the work they do 24/7, year-round. And whether you buy them a coffee at Siren's Java &amp; Tea in downtown San Pedro, or simply say thank you, your participation makes a difference. And I encourage all of your constituents, colleagues, and your families to come down to the L.A. waterfront for a full weekend of activities, music, enjoyment. I want to do recognize the Port of Los Angeles for helping coordinate this effort. Don Liu is representing the Port of Los Angeles. Thank you. Just give the port a round of applause for embracing this and helping lead the effort to bring the L.A. Fleet Week here. So those who can't make it to the L.A. waterfront this weekend, it's more than likely that you'll see a sailor sailor in your neighborhood this week. They'll be learning about the L.A. film industry in Councilmember Rue, Corian, Carrasco's district, volunteering at the L.A. Food Bank in Councilman Price's district, serving breakfast to the homeless, Councilmember Weesar's district, and learning about Silicon Beach in Councilmember Bonn's district. Or they'll also be seen landscaping the Ronald McDonald House in Councilman O'Farrell's district, and they'll be seen this Saturday night at the L.A. Dodger game as well. So I'd love for you all to come down to the waterfront. You'll have an opportunity to tour one of the four ships docked at the port, the USS America, USS Wayney Meyer, and the U.S., I'm sorry, three ships, U.S. Coast Guard ship that's active. You can also join us all tomorrow night in downtown San Pedro during the first Thursday festivities. There'll be a welcome party from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. on 7th Street. You can also come down to watch the USO Show Troop performance and Jefferson Starship at the Battleship Iowa this Saturday night, a free concert to all. "We Built This City on Rock and Roll," Felipe, remember that one? I think that's Mr. Carrasco's favorite, one of his go-to songs when he's at karaoke night. But looking forward to having Battleship, sorry, Starship Jefferson, they've changed the names, we were talking with the Admiral earlier, Jefferson Starship Saturday night along the waterfront. So this week, Los Angeles joins the ranks of San Francisco and New York and Seattle as we join together as a city to celebrate the men and women of service who protect and serve us each and every day. And we hope that this becomes an annual tradition here in the city of Los Angeles, and doing everything we can to continue to activate and bring folks down to the L.A. waterfront. We feel that this week, with L.A. Fleet Week in San Pedro, it's going to obviously boost our local economy, our restaurants, our shops, our welcoming our sailors with open arms, and all of our military personnel with open arms, and looking forward to continuing to spend the week with them, not only in San Pedro, but throughout the city of Los Angeles. Colleagues, now help me welcome Councilmember Bob Blumenfield to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Buscayeno, and you talked about making this an annual event. Well, all your great work making the ports of call, bringing it up, and the amazing plans that you've been working on that are moving us forward, I think are putting us in that direction, and I can't think of anything better than to have this as an annual event. So I want to join you in welcoming Vice Admiral Tyson and Rear Admiral Bynum to our city council for celebrating, all of us for celebrating the annual Fleet Week in Los Angeles. As the chair of the committee that oversees the Port of L.A., I want to especially thank the ports team for putting this weekend's event together, and to thank you, Joe, for all you're doing to make it happen here at the port. So this is the first of what will be many, many years if we have our way to come. Our city has hosted military events in the past, but with 200,000 visitors expected throughout the weekend at our harbor, this is not only extremely exciting, but this is really unprecedented. It's pretty amazing. It's a great opportunity, not only for our local businesses, but also to share Los Angeles with the men and women who serve our nation. To the almost 2,500 sailors docking at our port, I know Los Angeles has iconic landmarks that you will want to visit, but don't forget, you can sail up and down the L.A. River, well, you can't quite sail it yet, which really touches all of our cities, go all the way up to the headwaters, which is about as far away from the port as you can get, out in my district in the West Valley, but you can enjoy, you can enjoy the entire city and the culture of Los Angeles, which is, which is diverse and amazing. I have no doubt that you guys are going to leave loving the harbor and loving Los Angeles.
Yes.
I encourage everyone to go down to our port this weekend, enjoy some of the naval history, as well as tour some of the most modern and spectacular ships the Navy has to offer. We not only get to play host to, to the Navy here, but we really get a peek inside America's amazing armed forces. This will be a great time for the whole family. I thank you to all of our active-service military and veterans for everything that you do to protect our nation. We in Los Angeles are grateful. We welcome you and thank you for being here.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Councilman Blumenfield.
Mr. Buscayeno?
Yes, sir.
If it's okay with you, I'd like to recognize Mr. Englander.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. This is so exciting, having Fleet Week here in Los Angeles. One of the highlights of, of really anything I've ever done in terms of extracurricular activities is I went through the program of Leaders at Sea, where we took the frigate out to the midway and, or went out there to the midway and got to stay there and meet with everybody and spend a weekend down there, and then I attended Fleet Week down in San Diego as well, and it's just spectacular that it's here. It's also very frustrating. And one of the things I'm most frustrated about is Mr. Buscayeno, because I too wanted to compete to have Fleet Week in my, my district, and he won out to me, again. He always seems to win, anything, anytime we do something related to water. Just because I have no water in my district, I'm nowhere near an ocean, and I'm the furthest inland that you can possibly get, doesn't make it fair. But having said that, you do have the water, and I guess that's a little bit of advantage to Fleet Week, so I'll give you this one this time. Hopefully, this is the beginning of a wonderful relationship where we continue this annually. And I want to thank you for being here, for what you do for us each and every day, and to provide the freedom that we get to enjoy, and I'm truly grateful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Thank you, Mr. President. You're right, the water has done so much to this great city, has brought prosperity with our trade, and that we are home to such a rich military history in the San Pedro area, home to Fort MacArthur, another Thank you so much for all that you've done to activate our waterfront, and also recognize the men and women of our military. Thank you, Jonathan, for being here. Colleagues, help me welcome now Vice Admiral Nora Tyson, who I've had an opportunity to spend some time with her yesterday and even this morning, and she's fantastic. Just love her energy and her passion, her love of country. Ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Vice Admiral Nora Tyson, Commander of the U.S. Third Fleet, to the podium. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
So, thank you very much. On behalf of the Navy, the United States Marine Corps, the United States Coast Guard, I just want to say very sincerely thank you to Los Angeles, to this council, to San Pedro, to the port, our USO troop, Jonathan, I see you down there, the USS Iowa. It is an incredible honor for us to be here and to be a part of the inaugural Fleet Week. Like Councilman Englander said, I certainly hope this is the first of many, many more to come. But again, I just want to say thank you. We're very honored to be here and be a part of the community and appreciate the hospitality tremendously, so thank you so much. I encourage everybody to get down to the waterfront and see our ships and meet our sailors, meet our Marines, meet our Coast Guardsmen over the next few days. We have some incredible people out here serving our country, and we greatly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And now, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, the mayor, we'd like to present to you Vice Admiral Tyson, a resolution welcoming and the Los Angeles Fleet Week 2016 along our L.A. waterfront. There's a number of wheresses here. Bottom line is, we are so blessed and just thankful and grateful that we have brought the L.A. Fleet Week to the San Pedro area and throughout the city of Los Angeles, and we hope this is one of many to come. Thank you, Vice Admiral Tyson, and to the entire military personnel who are here, thank you for your service to our country. May God bless you and protect you throughout your service to our country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's all join in for the photo.
Okay. Betsy?
All right. One, two, three.
All right. Now, off to... All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. And we thank you all so much, all so much for your service. Okay, it's my understanding that concerns on item 26, Mr. Clerk have been addressed, so we can vote on item 26. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we, we also have more than 12 members, so why don't you identify the ordinances? Let's vote on reconsideration, and then we'll actually vote on the, the odds themselves.
Very good, sir. Those would be items four through eight and 10.
Okay, the first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special, or at this point in time, if you'd like to go into the special meeting, we could do that as well.
Okay, I think what we'll do, well, let me just check for one sec. Okay, let's go into the special meeting.
Very good, sir. We'll recess the regular and go into the special. Blumenthal, Bonin, Buscagno, Sodio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Corran, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 13 members present. That brings us to item 46, and it is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, Mr. Bonin?
Mr. President, we have an amending motion for item 46. It's a technical correction. I believe it's being circulated, but I don't believe it has been circulated yet.
Okay, well, we, is it, is it something that you can read?
Do you have a written copy, Johnny? Yes, Mr. President, I can, sure.
Okay, why don't we do that? Please, go right ahead.
So, this item before us, Mr. President, is a request from Caltrans to relinquish Venice Boulevard from your district down to mine, in exchange for which we'll be getting about $14 million in money we can use on street improvements. We don't have a copy of the text, it's still being circulated.
Okay, why don't we just find it and...
I need a copy right now.
Can we just get a copy of it?
Yeah. I want a copy now. And this item was heard in Tea Committee. Since then, Caltrans has asked that we just add a little additional language to make it clear so that they can proceed with it, and that's what we're...
Okay, I believe we have the language right behind you.
Thank you very much. So the amending motion would be to move the Transportation Committee report relative to the relinquishment of certain portions of State Route 187, Venice Boulevard, in the city of Los Angeles. Item 46 on today's council agenda, CF 16-0147, be amended to and adopt an additional recommendation as follows. To adopt the attached resolution as required by Section 73 of the Streets and Highway Code that would relinquish Venice Boulevard between Lincoln Boulevard and Cadillac Avenue, State Route 187, PM 3.5-PM 8.8, to the city of Los Angeles, and facilitate the California Transportation Commission to allocate $14.5 million to the city as the cost of relinquishment. So I move that we adopt the committee report as amended.
Okay, so on that item, let us...
I'm sorry, sir, we do need a seconder for that.
I'll second it.
Very good.
I want to just take one minute. Okay, so what I want to do is, because of the amendment, I want to give a minute each to Mr. Spindler and Ms. Ramirez on this item.
Okay, good. Appreciate it. The pig will address the issue.
Thank you. State Route 46. We don't want roads. Leave the state alone. The reason you want this is to get the money. Once you get the money, the potholes will return. The potholes will come back. And that's why you have to get this money for $7 million. $7 million for Mike Bonin? Yes, Mike Bonin wants to buy a beach house. So $7 million on Lincoln Boulevard will be diverted to give Mike Bonin his beach house. So vote no on the beach house. Keep the state road a state road, because when the city gets money, they place it in the general fund and steal it. Thank you.
Ms. Ramirez? She passes. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourth with...
Urgent fourth with.
Urgent fourth with, let's vote.
Thank you.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's adjourn the special, return to the regular. So now what we're going to do, I want to call Mr. Spindler back. Mr. Spindler, you'll get four minutes on the items and one minute of public comment. So just, and what I have here is one, two, three, and 40. So you, your first four minutes are on the items. Go ahead.
Thank you. The pig will take number one.
That's right. No, four minutes, Mr. Clockman. Thank you. Now, look at this sheet on number one. CD 8, uh, CD 8, Harris Dawson. Harris, what are you, oh, good, okay. This is a lien for over $6,000. I'm glad that Harris Dawson has decided to sit in the crowd and join Pepita Pig in his revolution. No, on 6720. No, well, I need, the councilman's slush fund can pay half the lien and then the other half, so 50% reduction. Thank you. And I really appreciate the participation of CD 8 representative. And then we have number CD 10. Well, only 1288. The good news on, on, on CD 10, 1101 South Arlington, I called Union Bank, and they want to cancel the lien, so thank you, thank you. Now we get to CD 6. That's Nury. Nury hates liens. Please cancel that. 14800 West Callahan Street, 4467. What do you say, Nury? Cancel it? Yes, thank you. And then we get to CD 12, West San Jose Street. Well, unfortunately, that lien cannot be canceled because in CD 12, they owe the mafia $1 million, so they cannot right now pay. Now we get to number two. Improvement and maintenance of Lucille and Merrells. CD 13, let all the developers pay this. Not the homeowners and the businesses, but the developers. Use Quimby fees and officer their accounts and waive the fees on the people. And then we get to the three. CD 7. CD 7 is in terrible condition. CD 7, the lighting district must be denied because CD 7 is in disarray. People everywhere, they ask Pepita Pig, what's going to happen to CD 7? The answer? Chaos. Chaos in CD 7, and this is an example of the stealing. They use digital lights, but they make the assessment on 1950 sodium technology, so you're overcharging everybody for this crap. So vote no on number three. And then we get to number 40, about these goddamn granny flat things. We don't want that. First of all, nobody has a granny living in the goddamn garage. Well, unless they're dead, but I'll get to that later another day. Now, this thing about the grannies and the extra housing is simply to get square footage for the developers, so the developers can get more money for entitlements. You have to stop this. People are here today, many, many angry people, because they don't want state standards. They do not want the state standards. They want you to follow municipal law. Stop giving these developers blanket exemptions to build thousands of square feet in somebody's backyard where pigs and people play. So vote no on this bullshit and let the people be free.
Okay, your minute of general public comment.
Now, we get to the public comment. The city should file bankruptcy. A special ad hoc city bankruptcy committee should be led by the most capable, the most capable expert of bankruptcy that I've ever seen. Corrin Price should lead the ad hoc L.A. City Bankruptcy Committee, because he's found a solution to all of our dreams, how to get rid of debt forever. So now, all you have to do, if you want to get rid of debt, is contact CD 9, mention code PDQ, and they will give you the information that Corrin Price can show you to get yourself debt-free and back on your feet again. He could do the same for the city. Please, lead this effort. Yes, on the ad hoc committee for PDQ.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Mr. Kocorian? I do believe there are a couple of closed-session items that we can move on now before I call our next speaker.
Yes, sir. Items 43, 44, and 45 have all been considered by Budget Finance. Committee recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations, and those can all be voted upon in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Very good, sir. For item 43, in the case entitled, in RE, the acknowledgment cases, there is a recommendation to expend $2,383,703.91 plus accrued interest in settlement. For item 44, in the case entitled, Leon Cooper versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $850,000 in settlement. And for item 45, in the case entitled, Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $195,000 in settlement.
Thank you. Let's, on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, if we could have Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have 1, 2, 32, 39, 42, and public comment, so please come forward.
Yes, sir.
I signed up for four, for five items, and you're only giving me four minutes. I hope you're listening, Mr. City Attorney. Take the finger out of your asshole. Number one is building and safety and nuisance abatements. You're doing a good job on, on that. Number two is lighting district, oh, and 32 is safety recommendation. You're doing a safety recommendation, general manager, building and safety, and number... You're doing a bad job on, on that. I'd like to go into my public comment now.
No, you don't want the rest of your time, Mr. Walsh?
Not important. As long as I want the rest of my five minutes.
No, then you, you, you need to stay on your items now. You give one minute of public comment.
I'm telling you right now, I'm off it, because you didn't give me five minutes.
And for item forty-five, in the case entitled Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in settlement.
Thank you. Let's, on those items, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, now, if we could have Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you have one, two, thirty-two, thirty-nine, forty-two, and public comment.
Yes, sir.
I signed up for four, for five items, and you're only giving me four minutes. I hope you're listening, Mr. City Attorney. Take the finger out of your asshole. Number one is building and safety and nuisance abatements. You're doing a good job on that. Number two is lighting district. And thirty-two is safety recommendation. You're doing a safety recommendation, general manager, building and safety. Number forty-five. You're doing a bad job on that. I'd like to go into my public comment now.
No, you don't want the rest of your time, Mr. Walsh?
Not important. As long as I want the rest of my five minutes.
No, then you need to stay on your items now. You give one minute of public comment.
I'm telling you right now, I'm off it because you didn't give me five minutes. I had five requests.
Mr. Walsh, get back on your, on the subject, please.
I'm telling you that I wanna go into my public comment.
Your public comment goes after your four minutes.
General public comment.
Mr. Walsh, stay on the items.
I forfeit my right to speak on the items. What are you gonna do? Beat the shit out of me?
Okay, so now, give him one minute.
Now I wanna go into my one minute of general public comment.
And that's what we'll do.
Okay. Now, I just want the city attorney to realize, since he shaved his mustache off, public input at city council, an opportunity for the public to address the council on agenda items which public hearings have not been provided, and meetings of the public who wish to speak on any cumulative of five fucking minutes is what I deserve here. Five minutes. Look at the rules. But, so to take your mouth off Herb Wesson, bad debt cock, and enforce the rules, I have five minutes. And it says here, at the time that the issue is being, the agenda item is being considered. You are now taking us away from the agenda item. The agenda items are not on the table, and you're making us speak at the beginning of the meeting. What a fucking piece of shit you are. And don't borrow money from this cocksucker, Wesson, because he won't pay you back.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. If I could add, Mr. Previn. Yes, Mr. Previn has nine and thirty-two, and then his public comment.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD two, sir. Item forty-three, which is the acknowledgment re case that you just settled for two point eight three million legal case.
You're on items nine and thirty-two, Mr. Previn.
Right, but item forty-three, there's a card.
No, item forty-three, you're on items nine, nine and thirty-two. So that's your last warning. You're on nine and thirty-two.
Okay, item nine is among a number of the lighting district items that you have on the agenda today, in addition, I think, four, five, and possibly six, all of which caught my attention, sir, because they are a majority protest, has stepped forward, and in that case, these proposals to do an assessment on people have been rejected. So it's very interesting. It took place in CD two, CD six, CD eleven, and a couple of other CDs. So I just want to alert the many districts where people may have a chance to step up for themselves, as opposed to be sort of steamrolled by these draconian reporting processes and these weird hearings in which you deny people the opportunity to actually address their concerns. I had a big issue with you, as you recall, just where some other people were down here on the lighting district like this, where they were concerned about the kinds of bulbs and the safety of their children, and then your city attorney made a ridiculous, if I may use the official term, ruling, that they were not allowed to comment on such things, that they could only comment on what you wanted them to comment on, which was something to do with the assessment, which is flatly absurd. It is a violation of the First Amendment, right? And you, sir, are doing a great job of doing that on a regular basis. Now, moving to item thirty-two, which I believe you said thirty-two.
Yes, I did. I have a card, thirty-two.
Right, thank you. So this was the Frank Bush detail. Frank Bush, I don't think I need to remind this group, is the new building and safety chief, who I have never seen a more warm reception for a gentleman ever in this hall. It was extraordinary. It was something like the Kobe Bryant, but it was real employees who felt that this is a public servant who's worthy of honoring, and it was very deep, it was deeply moving. I think Coretts was moved, which is very rare to see him in a moved state, but even he was moved. So what happened then, sir, is now he's been promoted to replace Mr. Chan. Now, Chan loves this guy as much as he loves Chan. This is a love fest. And this is an item that deals with the salary. Now, I scrutinized it as quickly as I could, and I cannot see the actual number. I wrote to the guy, attached the item this morning, said, what is the salary? Just disclose it, because all public employees disclose their salaries. It's nothing to hide. I'm sure it's a good salary. He's got the most important job in building and safety. Never mind that huge settlement from the other day where you did not allow any, if I may, comment on the two hundred and twenty-five million dollar legal settlement to prepare the disability piece for all the public housing since nineteen eighty-eight, that it was egregiously overlooked by the Redevelopment Association and such. There's an article in the L.A. Times about that yesterday, but how is the public ever supposed to comment on that with your draconian system, sir? It's confusing to us. And those are the only items that you're taking comment on now, so I'll have to stop. But the reality is, sir, and I'm not gonna take my public comment now. I'd like to take my public comment at the end of the meeting, as you were offering to some members of the public yesterday. But by doing it, as Mr. Walsh said...
Okay, you're on item thirty-two or nine?
Right. Item thirty-two and nine. I've already spoken on nine and thirty-two, so I will see, but there are other items that I put cards on.
Okay, so now, you get your general public comment.
Are you requiring that I do it now?
Put his, yeah, go right ahead.
I don't wanna do it now. I wanna do it at the end of the meeting.
Well, you have your minute.
Okay. So I'll talk about the acknowledgment re cases that I should have been able to speak to as an agenda item, because your board, your council's gonna approve it today. It's a case that is interesting. It's a case in which the City of Los Angeles and the LAPD decided, uh-oh, we're losing guys who are doing the training at LAPD. They're leaving town. They're going to another division. So against better advice, they decided to sue thirty-seven folks who got away to pay back the training costs. Now, there are problems with that kind of a lawsuit, as you can imagine, because it's unfriendly to sue your guys, but they did so nonetheless, and it resulted in a two point four million dollar legal bill, which is actually better than the attorney who was fighting this case for the city felt. He thought it was gonna cost even more. So there is this assumed liability, and when you look at that compared to the two twenty-five million and the various Willetts case, it's just, we need a transparent process, sir, whereby these legal fights are not done in the back room, they're done out in the open, so we can see why our money is being wasted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. So now we have Mr. Gus, thirty-three, thirty-nine, forty-two, forty. General public comment.
Council members, I actually put in a card for forty-three also, just so you know. Council members, your universe is about to get turned upside down. I'm gonna be speaking about these issues, all of these issues, on Sunday on KFI's Sunday Morning News, but I'm not gonna be speaking about these issues as a guest. I will be speaking about these issues on Sunday as the host for two hours on KFI Sunday Morning News. Your universe is about to get turned upside down. Item number thirty-three, it's good. This is what you should be doing. Street lighting, don't waste our time with celebrations and concerts and that stuff. Do your job. Work on street lighting and safety and things like that, and we'll praise you when you do. I will discuss more about item thirty-three on the KFI Sunday Morning News this Sunday, when I host, from six a.m. to eight a.m. Item number thirty-nine, the rent escrow account program. It's a fantastic program. This is what L.A. City Council members should do. I will be talking about item thirty-nine and other items like it when I host, not guest, when I host the KFI Sunday Morning News from six a.m. to eight a.m. this Sunday. Your universe is about to get turned upside down. By the way, any council members wanna come on KFI? Anybody? Item number forty. Another morass about housing. You come up with these fancy names, second dwelling units and these granny flats, all of this stuff. It's just chaos. Solve the damn problem. What are you waiting for? I will be talking about item forty and other subjects related to item forty this Sunday as the host of the KFI Sunday Morning News, not as a guest, for two hours, from six a.m. to eight a.m. Your universe is about to be turned upside down. Item number forty-two. I like it. I like it because it's from David Rue, who has not yet been corrupted. From David Rue and Jamba Juice, Mitch O'Farrell. This is what council members should be doing. Keeping the pools open, keeping our community safe, giving the kids something to do. When you do good things, we praise you. When you don't, we will expose you. I will be talking about item number forty-two at length this Sunday, when I host, not guest, the KFI Sunday Morning News from six a.m. to eight a.m. Maybe we'll talk about Mitch Englander at that time. Item number forty-three. I, you know, what you missed on this, when you didn't take public comment, is that you need to find out why cops are leaving the LAPD after five years. All you're doing is looking to sue them? Why don't you instead take that money and that effort and find out way, why the cops are leaving after five years? Why do they prefer to be law enforcement officers in other jurisdictions rather than the LAPD? If it's so good, don't sue them. Sit down with them and ask them what the problems are. This is a perfect example where you guys aren't getting it right. I will be talking about this item and related items this Sunday, when I host, not guest, on the KFI Sunday Morning News for two hours. For two hours, I'm gonna talk about this Mitcha Gus, and I may talk about Mr. Englander, Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. Wesson, this Sunday on the KFI Sunday Morning News. Any council members wanna join me on KFI for two hours? The first hour is gonna be about you guys and ladies. Now, may I go on to my public comment?
Yes. Give him his public comment, Mr. Clerk. Go right ahead.
Council members, as you saw in City Watch, my new article, Herb Wesson's explanation to the L.A. Times opens a Pandora's Box. Mr. Wesson told the L.A. Times that his problems started in two thousand and seven. If you go to City Watch L.A. and type in his name or my name, I trace Mr. Wesson's troubles back to the nineteen eighties. He was not honest with you, he was not honest with the L.A. Times, and I exposed it on City Watch. Furthermore, why did Mr. Wesson's media flack tell the L.A. Times that his house cost seven hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars? It cost nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will be the voice of KFI AM six forty for two hours this Sunday, from six a.m. to eight a.m., when your universe gets turned upside down. There is no clock running on KFI. I have control of KFI for two hours this Sunday. I have invited Mr. Wesson to come on and speak with me. No response. That speaks volumes.
Thank you. And congratulations. Congratulations and good luck, Sunday. All right. Ms. Ramirez? Is she still here? Mr. Akala, Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Akala. Now, Ms. Ramirez, you have one card to speak on, so that's, so let's give her the two minutes for that and her one minute for public comment.
I'm sorry, I have, no, I've got cards on twenty-one, twenty-two.
No, you put cards on where there were no public, the comic, public comment was already satisfied. Forty-two, you can speak on, so go right ahead.
I'm sorry, you said, I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Item forty-two.
You've already started my clock.
No, 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 hold your clock. Item forty-two, you can speak on. The other items, the public comment was already satisfied. So go ahead on item forty-two, and then we'll go to general public comment. Now you can start her clock.
Okay, sir, I did put in cards for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Item forty-two.
Yeah, item, yeah, I said, item number forty-two, yes, but I still have had, I put in cards for the other items.
I told you the public comment was satisfied, so you speak on forty-two. Hold her time. Ms. Ramirez, the last time, you can speak on item forty-two.
Right, but I'm saying, I also...
Okay, no, Ms. Ramirez, we're not gonna go back and forth. I explained it three times. You have a minute and forty seconds to speak on item forty-two.
Okay, and what, my question is, before we go on...
No, 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 no.
What is the, what about the other ones?
No, no, no. On item forty-two.
Ladies and gentlemen, the parks aren't necessarily the friendly, safe, secure, and jolly environment like the Music Center Grand Park. The parks used to be very wonderful, safe havens. Unfortunately, the parks are magnet for racist, hate-mongering, violent, jealous, nosy, uncivilized wetbacks and gangbangers who drug deals, commit assaults, and steal, steal, and steal from the patrons who are relaxing, resting, or reading a book. So I say, keep, keep, keep your eyes open. You need to have three to four security guards per park environment, as well as in front of the bathrooms. You have a lot of brawls breaking out in the bathrooms. You also need to have security officers in front of the men in the women's bathroom. Again, you've got a lot of theft, theft, theft in the parks, and you need to be careful. So if you're reading, someone will snatch your bags. You've got the gangbanging, chungo Latino pussy shitheads who walk around and have their lookout, looking to see who is asleep in the parks to see and grab and snatch your stuff. Be careful. I've been a victim of robbery and theft at the Music Center Grand Park. Please be careful. There is a lot of theft. Many people who doze off end up losing their purses and everything else, including their goddamn underwear. So, ladies and gentlemen, I suggest we put ice, 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 ice at the parks, every park. God bless Donald Trump and the United...
Thank you. Okay, wait, 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 wait. Now, give her her minute, Mr. Clerk. Now your general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, President. Having said that, I am excited that Donald Trump, el jefe, has the balls to take on Americans' problems, because nobody else does. I am sorry, I will not be voting for Mayor Garcetti. He has failed to keep public safety, and he has subsidized these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers. None of that crap anymore. He's a nice man, but I am so, I'm so upset about that. So Donald Trump and Sheriff Joe Arpaio, who will now be taking over the city attorney's office, we're firing Michael Fure. He's getting the royal boot out, and we're bringing Sheriff Joe Arpaio. Hurrah, rah! We're gonna have, we're gonna clean up this town. We're gonna get rid of these goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers, chungo Latino pussies, 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 and pigs and thieves, and we are going to bring civility, order, and restoration to this beautiful country. God bless the United States.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Akala, thank you. Mr. Akala? No, Mr. Akala, come on, you're on items one and forty. Give him his four, and then he'll get his general public comment.
Item one, you know them well. You know them well that everything you do in City Hall is illegal and immoral. You put liens on people that already have a place to live, and you say that you're fighting homelessness. You are creating homelessness. Don't you understand that, you idiots? One by one, Wizard Coretts, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Ryu, young clerk, city clerk, city attorney, the guy sitting on the bench, don't you understand that you're creating homelessness? How about you, Harold Dawson, Fuentes, Englander, Cedillo, Muscaino, Bonin, especially you, Bonin, and Bloomingfield? You're a bunch of idiots that don't know what you're doing. You're creating homelessness by putting liens on people and taking their houses away. You sell them to the highest bidder, which is like ten bucks. I'll pay ten dollars for that house, and, okay, it's gone. Obviously, you sold it to a developer that is gonna put money in your pockets. So you sell the house cheap, and you leave somebody out on the street. That's the way you do business, isn't it? Well, we need a different way to do business. We need to create a system where nobody can go homeless for any reason. You understand? Real estate business is dirty business, and we need to change it. The real estate world, it's a bunch of bullshit. All they do is spread the bullshit all over the world, all over. I'm not talking about just the United States, I'm talking about the whole world. And Donald Trump is over there in Mexico now, eating a lot of tortilla and beans, so he can come out here and blow a lot of farts. That's what he does for a living.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject, boy.
Okay, staying on topic. What's the next topic?
Forty.
Forty. I think that has something to do with something I don't really know much about, but I will make a comment anyway. I don't really give a shit about forty.
Well, you know what, Mr. Akala? Hold his time. You want me to go into your general public comment, where you can say whatever? So give him a minute for his general public comment. Let's do it. Let's do it, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Akala, general public comment.
General public comment. The Mexicans are gonna do something to Donald Trump that he has never heard before. They're gonna put a lot of chili up his ass. That's what they're gonna do. That fucking Donald Trump is a racist. He is the supreme... That fucking Donald Trump is a racist, he is the Supreme Redneck, and he's appealing to rednecks to go against Mexico. And now he's over there with the rich, the, the rich Mexicans trying to see how the hell they can, uh, they can, uh, keep control over the poor Mexicans. They don't know how to keep the lid on. One of these days, one of these days, this pot of beans is gonna blow up on you. Not only you, but the Mexican government, Donald Trump's government. If he ever gets elected, somebody's gonna go fart on his face and that'll be the end of Donald Trump. Believe me, Donald Trump, fuck you forever.
Thank you, Mr. Akala. Mr. Mohammed for your general public, public comment. Uh, no, 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 Mr. Akala, don't start with our, Ms. Ramirez, please. Mr. Mohammed, come on if you want to do your public comment. Okay, we getting disruptions in the back? Yes, Mr. Mohammed?
Yeah, our, our First Amendment is supposed to be freedom of religion, but seemed like the politician had turned it to be freedom against religion. But anyway, uh, our island environment in an uns- in non-serious environment, in a lax environment is dangerous. This messing attorney entertainment. We should be more serious and be concerned by what we're doing. We should bridge political responsibility. We should take the homeless and give the homeless people a lunch bag and a ticket and send them away from Los Angeles. We should enforce the laws downtown, on, uh, the lottery laws. Chief Beck did not enforce the lottery laws. We have mismanaged revenues. We should have checks over our, over our countries, what, what we, what we're guided by. This can't, land would be a better land if we could live by the constitution that ga- that guiding us. We should have jobs, we should have responsibility. We should live in some type of way of dignity. But anyway, uh, the United States government still treat their minority outcasts as inhuman. Chicago, New York, Philadelphia, Cleveland, and, uh, Detroit is the most worshiped city in America where black America live at.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Mr. Mohammed, thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Clerk, given that we've, uh, had the public comment, that gives us the ability now to vote, members, I want you to hear, to vote on mem, on items 1, 2, 3, 9, 32, 33, 39 and 42. So that is what's before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll to abulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, in regards to item 32, the approved annual salary for the permanent general manager, Department of Building and Safety, is $238,679 and 28 annually.
Okay, can I get Ms., uh, I thought I saw Mr. Watkins, but he moved. No, there he is. If I can get Bill Watkins, Jack, you, you moving too quick. If I can get Jacqueline, uh, Richardson, uh, William Rodriguez Morrison. Okay, one minute, uh, public comment.
Thank you, sir. Morning. Uh, hi, Mr. Fuentes, I'd like to catch an eye. Um, I guess, uh, to people who I feel in a lot of ways bought your seats, it's just the way politics goes from here to Washington, uh, it's just the way it's been. I hope you can find a heart to listen to a quick story. Um, I'm cleaning trash in Gil Cedillo's area, outside where my wife works, Magnolia Avenue School. Apply it to your own district, a lot of schools, a lot of areas, a lot of Spanish-speaking folks, uh, who will never complain, hey, Mr. O'Farrell, who will never complain about the way things are. They were not going to complain that their kids walk through trash. They're not going to complain that their storm drains are clogged. They're not going to complain, they, they lack the language abilities. Sometimes the status in our country is not, not there. So I want to just give voice, let's please ask the questions, Mr. Krikorian, what makes our city safe? What makes our city clean? Let's find a standard that we're not going to go under, please. Because right now on Alvarado, that standard is way too low. God bless you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, followed by Mr. Morrison, then I believe I have a Pamela Pearson and a Barry Johnson. Yes, ma'am.
I have many gripes against the Russian people. The first one is, um, many Americans don't know that they're here and that causes problems. I have to admit, first of all, that the Russian people, they have a lot of nice people and not everybody is bad. But, um, I believe that they're taking, um, food from the food pantries or themselves. I believe, uh, if, if any problems that we're having are Russian-American, could be straightened out if we knew the Russian people were here, that would straighten out by itself. That, that's the biggest problem right there. They're not all bad. Uh, I believe they're stealing money from the city budget, uh, from the homeless budget and giving money to themselves for their food, housing and, uh, students. Uh, I believe, uh, uh, too many are taking American jobs because they, they don't know they're here. Nobody hates the Russians, some of them are very nice, but not everybody, because they don't know they're here. I believe they mistreat black people and I believe they're illegally voting for the president.
Thank you. So if I can get, uh, Mr. William Rodriguez Morrison, Mr. Morrison, do I have Pamela Pearson or Pearson, Pamela, please come forward. Barry Johnson, Barry Johnson, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Pamela Pearson. Uh, yes, um, I'm not in costume, this is my work clothes, so-
Go right ahead.
I'm proud to be able to be county-trained and taking care of people in this city. Um, it was incomprehensible to me that someone would intentionally subject unlicensed laborers to serious injury by ordering them to excavate around an active gas pipeline while telling them the gas was turned off. And this was in my property, Mr. Corret's, next to Mahalan Drive. It's a three-inch gas pipeline. It's been leaking since before Eliso Canyon. And there's no permit for any of this work that they're undertaking, which I discovered on two dates, both, uh, Saturday evening, August 13th, and Thursday, where the city, uh, gas, Southern California Gas Company assured me the gas was still flowing. I, I'm just concerned.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hi, Barry Johnson, Studio City stakeholder. Recently, I heard our mayor on the radio speaking about the 2024 Olympics and he was saying how wonderful it would be to have opening and closing ceremonies at a brand-new stadium in Ing- Inglewood. Personally, I think it would be sacrilegious to have a third Olympics in Los Angeles in less than 100 years and not have opening and closing ceremonies where they had been held the previous two times at the Los Angeles Coliseum. I hope this body would do everything in its power to make sure that the opening and closing ceremonies, should they happen in this city in 2024, happen at the LA Coliseum where the cauldron sits ready to be lit. Thank you.
All right, then that concludes general public comment. We'll go, uh, to item 20 now for cards. We're going to open it up for, uh, for one minute each on item 20. Jason Vogel, followed by Scott Campbell, followed by Beverly Palmer. Good morning.
Good morning, good morning, council members. I'm Jason Vogel, I'm the builder of housing in Hollywood. I recently got a permit to build 10 housing units next to 5901 Sunset and the building department held me to the strictest standards of the zoning, including the Q condition put on by the 1988 Hollywood Community Plan. I'm opposing 5901 because it is so over the top and violates that same plan that I and other home builders have to respect. I'm opposed to 5901 because it allows 3, it would allow 300,000 square feet of, of space plus above-ground parking in a zone appropriate for 50,000 square feet. When I bought the adjacent property in 2002, we investigated zoning and saw that we had a 90-foot buffer from the commercial construction. Hudson Pacific bought their property years later, they undoubtedly knew their zoning rights and the value of the property based on it. Now the city council is set to vote on whether a well-connected developer is illegally allowed to increase the value of their property.
Thank you, thank you, next speaker, please. Sir, thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Got to give everybody the same equal time. Thank you very much.
Good morning, my name is Scott Campbell, I'm president of Hollywood Network Coalition, a broad-based coalition of Hollywood residents, businesses, educational institutions and nonprofits. Uh, I'm here in support of the 5901 project. This developer is a community-focused developer. They listen to the community, they support our schools, they support a wide range of Hollywood nonprofit organizations and especially true for this, uh, project, they're going to have a development agreement with lots of support for the community and I urge your vote aye on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. Beverly Palmer here on behalf of the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Uh, there are last-minute design changes to the project that have not been made available to the public. The planning department's letter posted says plans are attached, they aren't. The plans are apparently dated August 24th, they were not made available by close of business yesterday. No information has been provided on the size of the setback that newly was added or the reduction in retail or its effect on traffic. This kind of gamesmanship is inimical to a proper public process. The city has a heightened burden to tell the public what it's approving and make public processes fair and open, it's not living up to that. The general plan amendment the city's approving here is improper. I looked at general plan amendments in Hollywood from 2005 to the present, there were 19 approved and the pattern, especially on East Sunset, is of jettisoning low-density, uh, development to higher density, uh, bit by bit. Each next application relies upon the prior one to justify its general plan amendment and this is destroying the planning process in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mickey Jackson, followed by Ochil Gonzalez, and then George Abrams. And you can all come up at the same time and whoever gets there first is not a problem.
George Abraham. I put the next bus screenshots into the record for routes 2 and 302 during the 3:00 to 7:00 PM commute last night and the 6:00 9:00 AM commute this morning. And I found that Route 302 does not qualify as a transportation alternative. Uh, the first bus to arrive at, uh, the Bronson site was at 4:30 on yesterday's PM commute and the last bus, actually the last three buses arrived all at 6:30, three buses all bunched up at the same time. And this was, uh, for eastbound only and there was no westbound, uh, traffic, uh, westbound 302 route at this time. And then the AM commute, the opposite was the case, there were no eastbound buses, but there was only westbound. And in this case also, the buses were bunched up, effectively reducing the number of buses to serve this location. So, thank you.
Morning.
Hello, my name's Sochi Gonzalez, I live in West LA. Councilman Bonin is my, uh, councilman. I'm here to speak against a project. I think that we look at things as if they exist in a vacuum, they don't. We're a city with bursting water mains, we cannot support this type of density without having the proper infrastructure, which we don't have, so I just want to speak against the project. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is Mickey Jackson, followed by Stephen Whedon, believe, and Lauren Gubler.
I'm Mickey Jackson, I live and work in Los Angeles. We have some issues with 5901. It is introducing above-ground parking on Sunset Boulevard and there is not above-ground parking right on the Boulevard anywhere right now like this. And that is a problem because it will be used as an excuse to introduce more and more and more. And that's not good for Sunset Boulevard, that's not good for any of us. There's no at-ground amenities, uh, involved in this, it's just stark, right there in your face parking. And, uh, the Hollywood city, the Hollywood, uh, specific plan, or not specific plan, the Hollywood Community Plan is being circulated for comment right now. And please don't interfere with that process. Please don't do it this, please don't approve this and don't interfere with the process of, uh, public circulation of the plan.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Stephen Whedon and, uh, I am here representing myself. Uh, this project falls in the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council. I had the honor of, uh, chairing that, uh, council for two terms. Uh, this developer, Hudson Pacific, has a long, rich history of early engagement in the project. Uh, they, this project is the result of a lot of community input. I want to talk about the design. The building's tier architecture is designed to complement and reflect the existing neighborhood. The largest part of the building is set on Sunset Boulevard, is similar in height and scale to other nearby buildings. Its step-down design on the back creates a lower scale and setback for the neighborhoods to the north. I encourage you to support this project, it's well-designed. This, uh, this company has really engaged with, uh, the neighborhood council and the community and it deserves your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we've got Lauren, and then followed by James Pugh, followed by Mark Kenyon. Morning.
Good morning, council members. Lauren Gubler, President, CEO of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, here to support this project. As we all know, Los Angeles needs jobs. When I came to Hollywood 24 years ago, we were hemorrhaging jobs, dozens of companies left, literally thousands of jobs were lost. That pendulum has now swung back, that companies want to come back to Hollywood, witness Netflix, Viacom and others. But in order to accommodate them, we need Class A office facilities. Uh, we want to congratulate Hudson Pacific for designing a beautiful building, building for Hollywood that's going to bring hundreds, if not thousands, of jobs back to Hollywood. We need projects like this in order to bring high-paying, good jobs to our community. Hudson Pacific has been a wonderful corporate citizen, they've demonstrated, uh, through their investment in Hollywood that they care about our community. We urge you to support this project, it is exactly the type of thing that we need in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Jim Pugh, for the record, representing the applicant, Sunset Studio Holdings. I'm Wes Shepherd Mullen. Cover three quick points, the project, the process and the appeals that are before you. The project is a 15-story building on Sunset, creative office, ground floor, retail. Uh, it's been reviewed by the city and the community for three years. In September, it will be three years that this project has been, uh, ongoing. The changes that were mentioned by the appellant on the first comment, um, in opposition, were provided to the city, um, well before this hearing and all of those changes make the project a more environmentally sensitive design, shrink the project, provide better setbacks and provide less, uh, impacts. So on the process itself, there's been extensive public comment and unlimited time for the public to engage over the years, uh, at the hearing officer hearing and then everybody before the city council has unanimously approved this. So we ask you to support this project and deny the appeals. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mark Kenyon, I'm here representing the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance. As you know, we've gone on record, uh, objecting to the general plan violations and what we consider to be a pattern in practice by the planning department to violate our general plan, not only in the Hollywood area, but in the, in the northeast plan area. I would like to specifically, specifically object to a part of the process that seems to be happening more often, which is the posting of these last-minute, uh, planning memos, uh, that the public doesn't have the, the access to. In particular, the main reason why I put my card in this morning is I went to read this memo, there's supposed to be, uh, an Exhibit A attached to that memo, that exhibit is not attached. I have no idea what the planning department is trying to communicate with respect to this project. Our organization might at this point be willing to support the project, uh, if the general plan violations were to go away, but I can't because I don't have this Exhibit A.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, now we'll go ahead and turn it over to the, uh, the appellant. I know some cards had come in after we'd already started, so we're going to go ahead and file your cards, um, we'll show that you're on record as submitting them as well. Daniel Wright for three minutes, please.
Um, I think you need to clarify something because you just gave Beverly Palmer, who represents an appellate in this case, only one minute. So you're telling me that I representing an appellate am getting three minutes? I've requested 10 minutes to present our case.
Right, we're going to give you three, sir. So we'll start your clock over, though.
And what are you going to do about Ms. Palmer? And what are you gonna do about Ms. Palmer that you've only given one minute? She represents an appellant in this case.
We'll give her another two to come up and do that if need be. So we'll give you the three, and we'll create them equally. Okay, so now we can start his clock. Thank you.
Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm, on behalf of Hollywood Residents for Responsible Development, Jason Bogle and Bronson Avenue Properties. Let the record reflect that our firm submitted to the city clerk at 9:13 a.m. this morning a further objection letter regarding the issues the city has allowed us to know about the project proposed at 5901 Sunset. I'm going to enter into the record strenuous objections to this idea that we just had an admission from the applicant's attorney that the project modifications were given to the city well in advance of today's hearing. And yet, the amending motion, the staff report, the exhibits, all of those things have not been made available to land use appellants who have a serious stake in the impact of this project on their rights. My client owns the immediately adjacent northern property. This property, for years, has been zoned to have two lots that are parking-only with no above-ground structures permitted. His property rights were protected until they weren't, at the hands of the Planning Department and the Council Office. This is not planning. This is a huge gift to the developers in exchange for a handful of donations to the public. It's offensive what is being done here, and it's why so many landowners across the city are up in arms about the city's conduct. I also want to make clear that the record in this case, it's my understanding that the city clerk posted this morning a 30-page, single-spaced letter by the applicant's attorney and supporting documents of unknown length. We have never been given an opportunity to see those documents or to respond to them. Therefore, we're unable to develop countervailing evidence and argument in order to make an adequate administrative record, and that is a violation of constitutional rights to a fair hearing. In fact, it's possible that if these issues were, and usually when changes are made at the last minute, they're the most important changes, and yet we know nothing about them. As Mr. Kenyon points out, they're not even posted on the bulletin board. And the question is, are they before you, council members? Do you even know what you are considering or approving today? Because your process is so flawed that oftentimes you just sit there and wait for your computer to automatically vote yes. That is not done in other cities across California. And it pulls back a curtain of a problem that you do not actually appropriately hear these cases and determine them. So we object and ask that we be given, that this hearing be continued, that we be given a fair opportunity to know what this project is now, and an opportunity to respond to it. Otherwise, this is a grotesque constitutional violation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other two minutes. You want to come back up for that?
Thank you, and thanks to Mr. Wright for drawing your attention to the procedural improprieties. One person's minor changes can be another person's big deal. The applicant contends that he's just made minor tweaks. We have no idea. We have never seen it. That is not a proper process. I'd like to talk about the general plan amendment. The site has no significant identity. It's 1.55 acres. What is the standard by which one project becomes a project with significant identity? The only way that the applicant can even argue that the project has a significant identity is to look at other nearby properties that is actually proving the point that this particular parcel does not have a significant identity. A studio district is something that should be developed by plan, not parcel by parcel, as is happening here on the east part of Sunset, as is happening throughout the city, where developers come in, ask for these general plan amendments, and receive them, and then the next project comes in and gets the same request. It makes the general plan meaningless, and the city is violating its obligations under the law to properly plan for the orderly development and land use of the city. It might as well just throw out the zoning code and throw out the general plan and just become Houston and allow for the developers to call the shots. Finally, I'd like to say that the Hollywood Community Plan is being circulated for public comment. A project cannot be approved if it will interfere with the achievement of objectives in that general plan element, and therefore, the project should not be approved until after the Hollywood Community Plan update process is complete. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we have no other speakers on the queue, so we can, believe, go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that item is approved. Mr. O'Farrell.
Forthwith, please.
Okay, that item will be sent forthwith without objection per the request of Councilmember O'Farrell. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 19. Mr. President, I'm of the understanding that items 19 and 22 can be considered together.
All right. We'll go ahead and we'll do that, 19 and 22, together.
And, Mr. President, for the record, amending motion 19A has been circulated and is before council for consideration.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead and take 19 and item 22 together. For those of you who had filled cards out on both, if you haven't filled out a card, we're actually have already taken, we're started the item, so we'll note that you filled a card out. If you filled a card out on both, we'll go ahead and please indicate it when you get up. We'll give you the two minutes, but since we're taking them together, if you can consolidate that into one, so we can get through all the speakers, since we do have quite a few cards on this item, we'd all appreciate it. Mary Harrison, followed by Daniel Friedman, followed by John Gregorchuk, and whoever gets there in what order, doesn't matter. So we'll have, let me see here, on, and your name, ma'am?
My name's Mary Harrison.
Mary, okay. And you only have one card filled out, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, go ahead and go ahead and start.
I'm here to urge you to vote for the repeal ordinance. As a homeowner who has a plan that's been approved by the Department of Building and Safety, we've been prohibited from proceeding with our plan at great expense to ourselves. I urge you to grandfather those of us who are in the process, who have abided by the city's rules as they were when we entered the process. So please vote for the repeal ordinance. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Your name, sir?
My name's John Gregorchuk.
Okay.
I'm a homeowner in process with a second dwelling unit. I'd like to ask the council members, I understand there's concern about ADUs. I'd like to try and scope the discussion based on homeowners who are in limbo, and I'd like to ask that, I've spent most of my speaking time up here trying to validate secondary dwelling units, and today I'd just like to ask that, for those of us stuck in limbo, that you let us proceed with our projects and that you help us out. I currently have $30,000 in pre-construction costs that I've spent on the guidance of city planning and California state law, and there's a number of other folks who are also in limbo. Each delay, I pay interest on a loan I can't use, and it's affecting my health, it's affecting my relationships. I'd really urge you to please, please vote to pass this as fast as possible so that we can get out of legal limbo. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And you had one on 22. It's the same. We're taking them together. Did you need the extra minute as well?
Sure. Can you remind me, 22 is about the same issue, correct?
Yes.
It's about the ADUs? Sure. I'll speak.
You want to take your minute? Okay.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you. So, yeah, I guess, I just, for anybody who's still listening, I've been sending out emails and calling. I guess I'm the face of somebody, I'm the face of a greedy developer that I've been labeled as, and I guess LA Times wrote an article, and I was the poster boy, apparently. So in the comment sections, I've learned a lot about myself that I never knew before. But I, I mean, I purchased my house with the guidance from city planning two years ago on CA 120, and I understand the privacy concerns. I understand the concerns from other homeowners. All I'm asking is that we grandfather people who are stuck in limbo, and you let us continue. We could, the City Council could pass anti-development ordinance really quick, because there's so much, so much anti-development sentiment. It's why we have no housing in L.A. So just, for those of us in limbo, it would really help us.
Right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Council members, thank you so much. Councilmember Engelmann, thank you for the time. My name is Daniel Friedman. I'm with Jeffrey Mang, can I have two minutes, by the way?
Yeah, you have two minutes. You have 19 and 22.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Daniel Friedman with Jeffrey Mangels, Butler, Mitchell. We, myself and Ben Resnick, represented the second dwelling unit homeowner who was at issue in the litigation that has caused all this stir. And it's been concerning to me how the dialogue has kind of spun out of control in this city about how to react to this litigation, how to react to the court's order. In particular, I'm seeing this backlash against second units, which is very strange, considering that it really has not been an issue in this city. People say that the size is an issue. That's been a big discussion, but the size is not the issue, because even under Memo 120 and under the state law, you still have to comply with the underlying zoning regulations. If you have a max on FAR, that's a max on FAR. You're capped. And so really, in a lot of discussion about saying, oh, we need to cap it to 640, which was what was under the old 1985, 30-year-old ordinance, it doesn't change anything. Those buildings that people don't like, that they submitted into the record with those tall structures, those are just what's allowed under the zoning code. So if you're doing the work, you're modifying the code, you're doing the baseline mansionization, the hillside ordinance, that will do the job. By restricting the size of these second dwelling units, you're not changing anything. All you're doing is saying, we want people who may live in these second dwelling units to live in smaller habitats, even though the rest of the house can be constructed larger. It's really a red herring, and I really encourage this council to try to avoid that issue. Finally, I just want to clarify, and I really hope that the council can speak onto this issue. The ordinance, as it refers to the grandfathering, which we support, we support every part of the ordinance, including the repeal, but it does state that it applies to all issued permits. As I read that, that means including revoked permits. So any permits that were issued under Memo 120 would be grandfathered in, and my understanding is that that would be for revoked permits. And I would ask that this council and planning speak on that issue, just to clarify it for the record, because obviously, this has been a litigious issue to bring us here, and I'd like to avoid paying, having the city pay further attorney's fees to anyone else. Again, thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ira Belgrade.
Thank you.
You have two minutes as well.
So I did both cards, so I'll get two minutes, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes. You know, the next speakers that I'm gonna call up all have two cards in. So Ira, followed by Danielle, Danielle Langlos, Langlios, apologize if I got that incorrect, followed by Mark Kenyon. And if the other speakers can please come on up. If you're not standing there when I've called your name, and I'm gonna go to the next cards, I'll assume you're no longer here, and we'll file your cards as well, just so you know, because we do have a stack of cards, and want to give everybody an opportunity to speak. So, and then followed by Mark Kenyon, followed by Carlisle Hall, followed by Barry Johnson, and those are all the ones that I have in that have cards on each. The other ones, I have individual cards on, and we'll get to those right after that. Okay, please.
Last February, this City Council voted unanimously to support Councilmember Sadio and Fuentes' motion to facilitate accessory dwelling units. What did you think that meant? It meant just that, support them. But instead, now, many of you cave to pressure based on absolute nonsense created by one NIMBY homeowner, Carlisle Hall. Now, I live in Councilmember Rue's district and may have the only two-story, 1,200-square-foot rental unit ADU in that district that has helped support my family for the past six years and enabled us to stay in our home of 20 years. There has never been a single issue, nor have any of the negative effects occurred that Carlisle Hall talks about. Now, I've asked Renee White, Sir, and Julia Duncan from Councilmember Rue's office to bring Councilmember Rue down to see it, but I've always been rebuffed. Now, when I asked the mayor's office to come down, they did. They liked it. They photographed it. When I asked the Christian Science Monitor to come down, they did. They photographed it, and they liked it. When I showed a photo to Councilmember Sadio, he liked it so much, he offered to buy it. So, Councilmember Rue, before you call a place like mine a monstrosity to the LA Times, why don't you educate yourself first? Now, my invitation still stands, and I ask you all, please...
Sir, 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 I'm gonna hold your time. I'm gonna ask if you could, please, not yelling the mic. We have a translator with earphones on.
Well, I'm basically done. I just ask you to please give housing a break, and give families a break. Don't diminish the 1,200-square-foot maximum. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Langwa. I'm a resident of Van Nuys, California. I live in a small neighborhood called Kester Ridge. The lots are small. The houses are small. They're virtually all single-story. It's a great neighborhood to live in, largely due to the exclusionary protections that single-family home zones provide them. Now, I have seen what happens when the, I've seen the results of CA Memo 120. There is a very large second structure built on a very small lot. It's built in a small backyard. It's two stories. It's got three bedrooms. It's got two baths, and it's ruining the visual privacy for at least five of its neighbors. In addition, it makes all of us very nervous in the neighborhood, because we've lost a real sense of what the character provides. If this is turning into condos, you guys need to do that openly. If this is your solution to the housing problem, despite the fact that the legislative analyst has already stated that it will never work, urban infill in single-family home zones won't provide affordable housing until 25 years have passed. Furthermore, there's no way the developers can get their hands on enough of it to make a dent in the housing crisis. I urge you to look to other solutions. We have a ton of motels that are used for very little other than illegal activities in Van Nuys. Let's get those developers on those projects. Let's find ways to subsidize, change, and create affordable housing in a way that makes sense economically. Putting second units on single-family lots doesn't make sense. It won't make enough of a difference. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Mark Kenyon. I'm here representing the Mount Washington Homeowners Alliance and our over 600 members. We are objecting to the proposal before you for the reasons that I'll outline in a minute, but first, I'd like to say that we strongly support development, both in our community in Mount Washington, as well as the other communities throughout the Northeast, but we don't think that this proposal is reasonable. First, to item number 19, the SECO exemptions. First, item number 19, the SEQA exemptions. The, we believe city planning has, has, is violating SEQA because there are in fact cumulative impacts. This isn't a project that state law considered where we might just do one of these. We're talking about thousands of these to be produced, and the cumulative impacts of all those projects haven't been brought forward, particularly in hillside communities where the parking, where the construction parking, construction traffic becomes a, a major problem. As well as then the significant impacts under the, under the SEQA exemptions. Finally, I just would like to talk about why we think this is unreasonable, particularly for those of you who represent communities in the Northeast area community plan. That community plan has specifically, the heart of the plan is to control density. The city reduced the population density in the Northeast plan area specifically because the city recognized that it's, that the infrastructure in our communities, both the hillside communities, as well as non-hillside communities, is inadequate. And so therefore, we reduced the population density. But the city hasn't in fact been enforcing those. And so now we find that the Northeast plan area is in fact at its planned maximum of 250,000 people. So now, this ordinance is going to what, double? Potentially double the, the density within our communities without the infrastructure? This is unreasonable. You need to build proper streets, give us proper fire and police access, emergency access, particularly in the hillside communities. Thank you very much.
Good morning, I'm Carlisle Hall with Los Angeles Neighbors in Action. Thank you for taking testimony this morning on this important issue. I know you had the choice, and, and I appreciate the fact that you're giving us the opportunity to say a few additional words. Three months ago, the planning department's report claimed that repeal of our city's adopted standards that protects single-family neighborhoods from the negative impacts of second units that are too big or improperly located, not all, but too big or improperly located, was the only feasible way to comply with state law and with the LA Neighbors in Action court decision. Now everyone realizes that the city planning department report was badly mistaken. A clear alternative identified by the court is simply to strip the discretionary CUP procedures from the current ordinance. That can be done either by an amendment or by the administrative memo. In the past three months, homeowner associations and neighborhood councils from all over the city, every district, have registered their strong opposition to the department's proposed repeal and their strong support for one of these alternatives. And we don't object to grandfathering the stranded permit holders. We've heard so much from them about their concerns, except for the handful, two or three, that have been sued already or had their permits timely appealed. These particular developers were placed at their own risk in constructing. And yet they stubbornly and foolishly continued to build anyway. They have really only themselves to blame. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And our final two-minute speaker, Barry Johnson.
Barry Johnson, and I was appointed to speak for the Studio City Neighborhood Council by our president, as well as the president of the Studio City Residents Association. You have a CIS on file from the neighborhood, our neighborhood council. And I'm pleased to say that amendments 19A and 19B address most of the concerns in our CIS. Without these amendments, this proposed ordinance is de facto upzoning without consideration of additional infrastructure improvements as allowed by AB 1866. The increased density resulting when the SDU enlarges accessory housing to 1,200 square feet on a single-family property would increase traffic impacts, parking impacts, noise impacts, sewer, water, electricity, schools, first responders, streets, sidewalks, and other infrastructure impacts, as well as reduce open space setbacks and separation between dwellings. I hope you will vote for these two amendments. And just remember, for most of us, they always say, a person's home is his castle. For most of us in single-family homes that are for the most part under 2,000 square feet, that home is our castle. It's the only one we'll ever own. And, you know, please help us with our out on our neighborhood character, which has been eroding at an alarming rate. Thank you.
Yes, please. Excuse me.
You know, Mr. Johnson, we have a new policy where it relates to neighborhood councils and their ability to speak before this body if they have completed a community impact statement. So my question to you is, did you, were you, did you say everything that you needed to say? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that, no, thank you. Okay, the next speakers will have one minute, as they have one card filled out. Excuse me, ma'am, I haven't called anybody up yet.
Oh, sorry.
If you could please go ahead and have a seat, until I call your name. Again, for those of you who continue to turn cards in, submission of cards closed at the time we began the agenda items. However, your cards will be filed officially that you did turn cards in, so they'll be part of the public record. If we could have, and whoever arrives at the podium first can begin speaking and just let us know your name, so this is not in a particular order, but Marshall Long, Abrams, Mr. and Mrs. Abrams, just can't make out the first name and I apologize. Underland Drive, Antonio Ramirez, Armin Muradin, Muradin. Good morning. Yes, sir. At the podium, yes.
You addressing me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Marshall Long. For about 10 years, I've been designing a garage behind my house, below grade, and an office of space where I can move my one-person business when I retire. City ordinance allows 640 square feet, which is not large enough space for my library and files. The structure I'm proposing is about 1,100 square feet. It complies with the current state code regulating these buildings, which allows 1,200 square feet. If the city ordinance is not repealed, people like me who want to retire and work in a detached space adjacent to their homes would have to get in their cars and drive to an office, thereby causing more traffic, more noise, more smog in a city with the most smog in the United States. I urge the city to repeal the ordinance and bring your requirements into compliance with the state code. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
George Abrahams. The second dwelling unit in an R1 zone is a form of theft of the work and the premium price that people had to spend to buy the most desirable form of housing there is. In fact, the U.S. Census American Community Survey found that 79% of people preserve, prefer to live in single-family units. And this is just a repeat of the same form of theft that occurred when the small-lot ordinance had a provision in it to allow RD 1.5 apartments in R2 duplex zones. So how can we condemn criminals who mug victims for their cell phones and Air Jordans if the city council is going to enable the theft of property value? And so I believe that the second dwelling ordinance that we currently have should not be repealed.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. This is my fourth time here, and I'm-
Please state your name for the record.
Armin Muradin. I'm actually from North Hollywood District, and I support Mr. Krikorian. And I got my permits almost eight months ago. My garage is knocked down, and I did the foundation for 1,200 square feet. My backyard's like Amazoned, I've stopped completely. No inspections, no anything, and I can't go forward. I'm like 30,000 in the hole already. I would, please, please, I would love for you guys to support this. People talk about traffic, people talk about this. That's why when we take it to the city and got our permits, that was all covered. Driveways, carports, garages. I'm out of words, I don't know what to say. Every time I come up here, I'm just lost, I just, and it's frustrating already.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Garan Papayan, followed by Steven Gregorchuk, Matthew Gregorchuk, Perusa Papayan.
Good morning, my name is Garan Papazian. What I'm hoping to accomplish here today is for those of us like me that are stuck in limbo, move forward. By moving forward, I'm not talking about getting bounced around from one city committee to another committee, like we have been for the last six months. I would like shortly after this vote to walk into LADBS and get a, get a permit, or to pick up the phone and, for a permit that I've spent $30,000 on so far, call an inspector. And I want to do this without signing any documents from the city that no attorney advises me to sign. Grandfathering us should be the easiest vote that you guys have all day here. We're pregnant, as you hear, we don't have much flexibility. We should not be punished for the city not crossing its Ts and dotting its Is. We relied on the city's SDU policy in effect and acted upon it. This is not a debate about the correct SDU policy. This is a debate about fairness. We relied on the city's SDU policy in effect. Going forward, don't issue any new permits, but grandfather us in. And thanks for all the city council offices that have taken our calls. Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you very much, thank you. Good morning.
Hi, my name is Perusa Papazian, and I'm just a regular citizen. Please vote for grandfathering us for a second dwelling unit. My permits were issued on March 2nd, 2016. We're almost in September, I cannot move forward. I've spent more than $30,000. I'm not talking about $3, I'm not talking about $300. And basically, everything from my financial to my mental to my emotional, everything is on hold, and I cannot move forward. We really, Mr. Krikorian, I'm part of your district, we really need to move forward, and please grandfather us in with urgency. Everything is on hold. I even can't pick up my kids today because I've been coming to the meetings and I had to hire somebody. But we cannot move forward, we really need to know what we can do and what's our next step. Thank you.
Thank you, no, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name's Matthew Gregorchuk. I'm a small builder, I got my contractor's license three years ago. I thought the second dwelling unit was a good niche for me to get started in. It's really difficult to, to build in Calif, in Los Angeles legitimately, the permit process, the, the planning. These second dwelling units are a great way for me to get started. The neighborhood councils, speaking against them, most of these councils are elected, I know in my district, where I'm at in Oneeka, it was 150 people voted for the council. So letters from neighborhood councils, they represent minorities in the neighborhood. These homes make purchasing a home in, in Los Angeles affordable because I'm able to buy a house, and so long as I can maintain the setbacks in the backyard, the side yard, I'm able to build a second dwelling that can help me pay for a mortgage. If you're 30 years old, this is not, you know, you can't afford a house here.
Thank you. And is Steven here as well? Is that your brother? Same last name? No, okay. Sarah Mansori? You can't speak for somebody else, but thank you very much. Sarah Mansori? Said Sada? Vahi? Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Said Robzadeh. I'm here to ask you to please vote for grandfathering the second dwelling unit. Back in 2014, I, I got a permit from the city to build a unit in my backyard so I can house my caregivers, who I depend on, as a quadriplegic. I got a loan, and back in September of 2015, I started construction. My building has been done since March of 2016. I have followed all the city's rules and regulations. All the inspections have been done. The only thing that is remaining is issuing the certificate of occupancy. Since March, I've been in limbo. Please vote for grandfathering of the unit. Please save me from this misery that I'm in right now.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council. My name is Vahi Masurian, and I'm a resident of Grunau Hills. And I'm also stuck in limbo, but I'm in the permitting process. I'm in the final stages of clearance. And, and all I need is, is the, is you guys to vote on this and, and give us the okay to move forward, so I also can be grandfathered in. I don't have a permit, but like I said, I, I am in the last process of clearances with the Department of Building and Safety. And like many of my fellows, hard-working homeowners, I also pulled a second loan on the house, paying a second mortgage. I moved forward with removing my pool because the city required me to remove the pool to build a second dwelling. It's just, it's frustrating, it's tough. And this home I'm building is for my parents. My father's sitting behind me, in the yellow shirt. And that's all I ask, is, is give us the, the right to move forward. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
And Mr. President, if I may, in the meantime, amending motion 19B has been circulated and is before council for consideration as well.
Yes, thank you.
Steven Appleton, I am not here as a developer or as one that's actually building a unit, but I'm as one who's concerned about neighborhoods, and in a different way than you've been hearing. I live in Elysian Valley that's going through a lot of change. I can point to numerous circumstances where long-term homeowners benefit from accessory dwelling units as a means to house family and as well to achieve some small measure of rental income. Guys, this is a red herring. The kind of anxiety that's going on about this issue, where there are very few of these units actually built, they are the domain primarily of homeowners, are very small investors, is standing in for some other kind of anxieties in the city. Your legislators, please don't listen to the loudest voices. Take findings of fact, look at what in fact planners and those who look at these issues tell you this does, make the right judgment, legalize these older units, and as well facilitate them to be built in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, Robin Greenberg, followed by Lynn Kuahara, followed by Robert Schledinger.
Yes, please.
Sochi Gonzalez, and Anna Plumlee is the final speaker. So those are the cards that we've got.
Good morning, my name is, my name is Sarah Mansori, and I'm here to request, as councilmembers, to help us with, with the second dwelling unit that we have. And we are requesting, please grandfather in this project because it's been nine months, and all I'm waiting for is the final inspection and the certificate of occupancy. And I don't have anything else to say, but I have mentioned their concerns, but I'm desperately asking for the removal of this hole so we can proceed with this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. And again, if you can, please state your name.
My name is Lynn Kuahara. I'm a 50-year resident of Council District 10. I was a child when we moved, my family moved there, and now I'm old and apparently hearing impaired. I would, now that I'm on the other end of the age scale, I just want to leave a neighborhood as nice as the one my parents moved me into. And that was a single-family- as nice as the one my parents moved me into. And that was a single-family area. We were a family of six in a two-bedroom apartment, and we strive to save, to build, to not build, but to buy a house. These people who want to build second units, it's like a fast money scheme. A $4,000 additional home per month.
Very, thank you very much. No, thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Robin Greenberg. I'm president of the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council. We have submitted a C I S on 8/22 of 2016 on this subject. I speak against granting legal nonconforming status to second dwelling units for the purpose of complying with state law A B 1866. I would like to thank our councilperson, Paul Coretts, and I would also like to thank David Rue for protecting our hillsides. I represent 27,000 homeowners in the hills, such as from the 405 to Laurel Canyon, including Roscoe Mayor Road, Beverly Glen Canyon, Coldwater Canyon, Benedict Canyon, and Laurel Canyon. We who are in the hills do not have the advantage that the people in the flats have. Most of our streets are very curved and very narrow.
Yes.
Again, what was your name?
Robin.
Sergeants, sergeants. Would you go get her, please, and bring her up here? Now, your neighborhood council submitted a community impact statement, correct?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. So we'll give her, you, with that, you'll have another minute or two. So sit down. At his discretion, but I want to make sure you finish your statement. That is now the policy of this council, that if a neighborhood council does a community impact statement, that we bring you to the center table because you're an extension of us, and we afford you time. So we appreciate. So continue.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank our councilperson, Coretts, and also David Rue, who also helped to protect the hillsides. And councilperson, Coretts especially, comes to every single one of our meetings in the hillsides, and I really appreciate it because it takes extra long time to get there. And we would love you all to come to visit us. The Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council is against the one-size-fits-all approach and urges the city to slow down and do a thorough study of the options to the city. The repeal of the second dwelling unit ordinance will result in the state's default standards for second dwelling units applying in every neighborhood in the city. This one-size-fits-all approach is the wrong land use policy for a city with so many different neighborhoods and will have a negative and lasting impact on our single-family neighborhoods. A major policy decision such as the repeal of the second dwelling unit ordinance should be considered only after a thorough study of the potential neighborhood impacts. Under existing rules, second dwelling units are prohibited in all hillside areas, including Elysian Park, Eagle Rock, Silver Lake, Highland Park, Monocito Heights, and horsekeeping zones such as Chatsworth, Silmar, Shadow Hills, and the long-designated scenic highways. Dozens of neighborhoods are included, including Sunset, Ventura, Valley Circle, Foothill, Los Villas, Eagle Rock, and West Adams Boulevards. And we hope that you will protect our hillsides. One of our members has stated, who lives in the Laurel Canyon area, repealing the S D U for this area will markedly increase incidents where emergency vehicles are denied access to a very high fire hazard severity zone. The result could be a citizen dying from a heart attack because an ambulance could not make it to the victim in time, or a repeat of the Kirkwood Bowl fire, or worse. The repeal of the S D U in areas served by substandard hillside streets is incredibly dangerous and reckless. I urge you to protect both the citizen and the property in the hillside area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming on behalf of the neighborhood council as well. Next speaker, please.
My name is Robert Schlessenger. I'm from the Bel Air Beverly Crest Neighborhood Council. I'm a planning and land use committee chairman. Basically, Robb said most of what I want to say, and I know that you have a lot on your agenda, so I'm going to withdraw what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Appreciate that.
Hi, my name's Sochi Gonzalez. I live in Councilman Bonin's district. I submitted this. I hope you guys all have a copy of it. It's granny flats in my neighborhood. I'd like you to look at the first picture, if you would. That's a three-story granny flat with two patios. It's 1,200 feet. It's three bedrooms, three baths, and it completely blocks the light from the next-door neighbor. It is, in effect, turning an R1 neighborhood into an R2 neighborhood. I know when I'd spoken with people in your office, they seemed a little flippant, as if it were no big deal, but I can show you six large granny flats within six blocks in my neighborhood. Here's another picture of the granny flat, again, three stories. It's renting for almost $5,000 a month. Again, a three-bedroom, two-bath. Here is the front. This is from the front. I want you to see how large it is, how large the house is. I mean, it is all property. It is all house at this point, and it's two houses. Then I'm going to show you another picture. This is two houses, each with a granny flat. This is from a half block away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Anna Plumlee, and I am in Councilman Martinez's district. My husband and I are newlyweds and just purchased our first home this past February in the Kestner Ridge neighborhood of Van Nuys. Needless to say, we begged and borrowed to get every dime we could to purchase this home, and it's extremely disappointing and frustrating to us to see all of our money that we have hard-earned and worked so hard to make this big step in our lives, have a neighborhood that when we walk our dogs, we see a giant two-story house immediately on the street behind us. We also see construction within eyesight of our front door, again, building two properties on a small lot. It's extremely frustrating to see this and disconcerting as, you know, young, working, hard-working individuals in the city to see our potential investment in what we're, neighborhood we love, be disintegrated.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker, Daniel Friedman, coming up for one more minute.
Thank you, President Protam. I appreciate you bringing me back up here to speak on motion 19B, which was posted, I believe, probably while I was speaking.
Go ahead and go.
Yeah, I want to speak on the issue. Councilman Martinez and Coretts signed onto a motion which is trying to repeal, to assure that the grandfathering does not apply to my client's second dwelling unit. I want to be clear that you're victimizing a victim. This is someone that went through the process to get a second dwelling unit permit, like everyone else that you're trying to grandfather in today. And to say that just because they were sued by Carlisle Hall, that they shouldn't be grandfathered, is deplorable. You can't do that. This person has spent thousands, tens of, hundreds of thousands on this, not only defending the city in litigation, but also trying to develop a second unit for his grandfather, who's here to speak. And I'd love for you to speak to him if you would give me another minute, but I'm sure you won't. But that's just, you can't pass 19B. I beg of you, it's not the right thing to do. It's unfair. It's unfair to the community. It's unfair to this individual who did everything, just like everyone else here today. So I beg of you not to approve motion 19B. Thank you.
Thank you all. We, at this time, we need to, sergeants, clear the room. We're going to go into closed session on this item. You guys are welcome to wait for us. Welcome to wait for us in the back. If some people submitted their cards after the conversation began, your card will be submitted to the record, but if your card, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. If your card came in after the conversation began, then you are not given the right to speak. You have to submit your card prior to the conversations. Sergeants, please clear the chambers so that we can go into deliberations on this. Please, and you guys are welcome to come back when we finish. And I would not suggest you go far. But please, clear the chambers.
Come to the L A waterfront and celebrate Fleet Week 2016. Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the L A waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active-duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the battleship Iowa, free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the lane victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at L A Fleet Week. Don't miss the Fleet Week First Thursday kickoff event on September 1st in historic downtown San Pedro, a short walk away from the port's main channel. Starting at 6:00 P M., visit local galleries, shops, and eateries. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, and First Thursday's popular shabby chic art scene.
Fleet Week is coming to the Port of Los Angeles. L A Mayor Eric Garcetti joined naval officers to announce the plan aboard the USS Iowa. City leaders intend to make L A Fleet Week an end-of-summer tradition featuring active military ships.
I think it's such a tremendous honor to recognize and celebrate the bravery and dedication of our armed forces. It's a great opportunity to show off L A, the new L A.
We are so excited to host Fleet Week here at America's port, where we're going to be rolling out the red carpet, or I should say, the blue carpet, for America's heroes here along the L A waterfront. along the LA Waterfront.
Retired Navy was fantastic going aboard.
All the guys were great, all the gals were great. Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Most people would really think it's just a ship, but there's a lot more experience to it.
We saw a great event today. We learned a lot about the Navy.
The Port of Los Angeles has invested over $600 million along our LA Waterfront within the last 10 years. There's events like Fleet Week now that bring people to the LA Waterfront, to our shops and our restaurants. In addition, there's the 8th Annual Conquer the Bridge, where participants will be able to run alongside servicemen and women from the United States Navy, and that's going to be a draw in itself.
Come to the LA Waterfront and celebrate Fleet Week 2016. Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the LA Waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active-duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the Battleship Iowa. Free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the Lane Victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam Wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at LA Fleet Week. Don't miss the Fleet Week First Thursday Kickoff Event on September 1st in historic downtown San Pedro, a short walk away from the port's main channel. Starting at 6:00 PM, visit local galleries, shops, and eateries. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, and First Thursday's popular shabby chic art scene.
Fleet Week is coming to the Port of Los Angeles. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti joined naval officers to announce the plan aboard the USS Iowa. City leaders intend to make LA Fleet Week an end-of-summer tradition featuring active military ships.
I think it's such a tremendous honor to recognize and celebrate the bravery and dedication of our armed forces. It's a great opportunity to show off LA, the new LA.
We are so excited to host Fleet Week here at America's Port, where we're going to be rolling out the red carpet, or I should say, the blue carpet, for America's heroes here along the LA Waterfront.
Retired Navy was fantastic going aboard.
All the guys were great, all the gals were great. Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Most people would really think it's just a ship, but there's a lot more experience to it.
We saw a great event today. We learned a lot about the Navy.
The Port of Los Angeles has invested over $600 million along our LA Waterfront within the last 10 years. This events light Fleet Week now that bring people to the LA Waterfront, to our shops and our restaurants. In addition, there's the 8th Annual Conquer the Bridge, where participants will be able to run alongside servicemen and women from the United States Navy, and that's going to be a draw in itself.
Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the LA Waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active-duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the Battleship Iowa. Free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the Lane Victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam Wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at LA Fleet Week. Don't miss the Fleet Week First Thursday Kickoff Event on September 1st in historic downtown San Pedro, a short walk away from the port's main channel. Starting at 6:00 PM, visit local galleries, shops, and eateries. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, and First Thursday's popular shabby chic art
Fleet Week is coming to the Port of Los Angeles. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti joined naval officers to announce the plan aboard the USS Iowa. City leaders intend to make LA Fleet Week an end-of-summer tradition featuring active military ships.
I think it's such a tremendous honor to recognize and celebrate the bravery and dedication of our armed forces. It's a great opportunity to show off LA, the new LA.
We are so excited to host Fleet Week here at America's Port, where we're going to be rolling out the red carpet, or I should say, the blue carpet, for America's heroes here along the LA Waterfront.
Retired Navy was fantastic going aboard.
All the guys were great, all the gals were great. Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Most people would really think it's just a ship, but there's a lot more experience to it.
We saw a great event today. We learned a lot about the Navy.
The Port of Los Angeles has invested over $600 million along our LA Waterfront within the last 10 years. This events light Fleet Week now that bring people to the LA Waterfront, to our shops and our restaurants. In addition, there's the 8th Annual Conquer the Bridge, where participants will be able to run alongside servicemen and women from the United States Navy, and that's going to be a draw in itself.
Come to the LA Waterfront and celebrate Fleet Week 2016. Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the LA Waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active-duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the Battleship Iowa. Free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the Lane Victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam Wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at LA Fleet Week. Don't miss the Fleet Week First Thursday Kickoff Event on September 1st in historic downtown San Pedro, a short walk away from the port's main channel. Starting at 6:00 PM, visit local galleries, shops, and eateries. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, and First Thursday's popular shabby chic art
Fleet Week is coming to the Port of Los Angeles. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti joined naval officers to announce the plan aboard the USS Iowa. City leaders intend to make LA Fleet Week an end-of-summer tradition featuring active military ships.
I think it's such a tremendous honor to recognize and celebrate the bravery and dedication of our armed forces. It's a great opportunity to show off LA, the new LA.
We are so excited to host Fleet Week here at America's Port, where we're going to be rolling out the red carpet, or I should say, the blue carpet, for America's heroes here along the LA Waterfront.
Retired Navy was fantastic going aboard.
All the guys were great, all the gals were great. Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Most people would really think it's just a ship, but there's a lot more experience to it.
We saw a great event today. We learned a lot about the Navy.
The Port of Los Angeles has invested over $600 million along our LA Waterfront within the last 10 years. This events light Fleet Week now that bring people to the LA Waterfront, to our shops and our restaurants. In addition, there's the 8th Annual Conquer the Bridge, where participants will be able to run alongside servicemen and women from the United States Navy, and that's going to be a draw in itself.
Come to the LA Waterfront and celebrate Fleet Week 2016. Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the LA Waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active-duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the Battleship Iowa. Free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the Lane Victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam Wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at LA Fleet Week.
That's delicious.
Come to the LA Waterfront and celebrate Fleet Week 2016.
Bring the entire family for exciting events Friday, September 2nd through Labor Day, Monday, September 5th. A free event at the Port of Los Angeles on the LA Waterfront in San Pedro. Tour naval and Coast Guard vessels. Enjoy live music. Meet active duty personnel. Check out the hands-on displays and exhibits. The kids will learn about science, technology, engineering, and math at the Free STEM Expo. Roar and spectacle of military and other specialty aircraft. All during Fleet Week, get discounted tours of the Battleship Iowa. Free for active military personnel, veterans, and children under five. Also free to active military personnel, tour the Lane Victory used in World War II, Korean, and Vietnam wars. You will love the local eateries and popular gourmet food trucks at LA Fleet Week.
That's delicious.
Don't miss the Fleet Week First Thursday kickoff event on September 1st in historic downtown San Pedro, a short walk away from the port's main channel. Starting at 6:00 PM, visit local galleries, shops, and eateries. Enjoy live entertainment, food trucks, and First Thursday's popular shabby chic art scene.
Fleet Week is coming to the Port of Los Angeles. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti joined naval officers to announce the plan aboard the USS Iowa. City leaders intend to make LA Fleet Week an end-of-summer tradition featuring active military ships.
I think it's such a tremendous honor to recognize and celebrate the bravery and dedication of our armed forces. It's a great opportunity to show off LA, the new LA.
We are so excited to host Fleet Week here at America's Port, where we're going to be rolling out the red carpet, or I should say, the blue carpet, for America's heroes here along the LA Waterfront.
Retired Navy was fantastic going aboard.
All the guys were great, all the gals were great. Thanked them all for all that they do for all of us.
Most people would really think it's just a ship, but there's a lot more experience to it.
We saw a great event today. We learned a lot about the Navy.
The Port of Los Angeles has invested over $600 million along our LA Waterfront within the last 10 years. There's events like Fleet Week now that bring people to the LA Waterfront, to our shops and our restaurants. In addition, there's the 8th Annual Conquer the Bridge, where participants will be able to run alongside servicemen and women from the United States Navy, and that's going to be a draw in itself.
So you're not going to present?
No. You can do it. You can do it fast.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I look at your notes. I don't think I have it laid out as beautifully as you did, so...
Well, these are Mr. Glass' notes.
Yeah. I may not go through them. I don't know if I should go through all this.
Okay. I want to welcome everybody back. I'm going to ask the folk at the center table to please identify themselves and if you would give us a explanation as to what is before us. So, Madam City Attorney, you want to start?
Cherry Kaufman, Masia City Attorney's Office. I'll just give a very brief overview of how we got here. State law on second dwelling units in the 80s allowed for discretion and conditional use permits. The city of Los Angeles had a conditional use permit for second dwelling units. In 2003, the state law passed a new second dwelling unit statute that precluded the city from exercising any discretion and stated that all second dwelling units had to be addressed ministerially. In order to comply with that, there was a ZA departmental memo in 2003 that deleted the city's discretionary components but left the ministerial components in place. In 2010, another ZA memo, 120, replaced the 2003 memorandum and said that the city was going to comply in default to state law standards. The city was sued in 2014, challenging that process and also challenging a second dwelling unit for property located on Crim Drive in Cheviot Hills. And the judge stated that the city's 120 memo was invalid. It didn't have any severance analysis, and so it didn't comply with state law. But the court did not strike down the city's ordinance at this time and said that the city had to exercise discretion, but wasn't going to tell the city how to exercise its discretion in order to come up with a solution that complied with state law. And that's why we're here today.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, you may.
Briefly take it from there. Ken Bernstein, Department of City Planning. The ordinance that's before you was recommended by the Department of City Planning, unanimously approved by the City Planning Commission, and it would address the court decision by repealing the city's 1985 second dwelling unit ordinance, which is...
Now, you're referring to 19A?
This is actually the...19A is an amending motion. This is the proposed ordinance coming out of City Planning Commission.
So why don't you go with, if you would, continue, but then incorporate how 19A adjusts that? Okay? So go right ahead.
So the ordinance as recommended by City Planning Commission and in the Plum Committee report would result in a repeal of the 1985 ordinance provisions. And that repeal would return the city to the same accessory dwelling unit, second dwelling unit policy that has existed for the last six years since 2010, which are the state's default standards. And then they would also provide the grandfathering that was mentioned. So that was approved unanimously by the City Planning Commission and the Plum Committee. The reason for our recommendation was to provide a straightforward approach to address the consequences of the court order. As you heard in the testimony today, our department has been contacted by more than 70 property owners who have been in limbo for quite some time. And we do know if we fall back on state law, something of what that would look like in that over the last six years, we have had only a small number of second unit applications, really just a handful of applications per council district per year. And in recent years, that has averaged about 750 square feet. We certainly have heard the concerns about neighborhood protection and neighborhood character. And motion 19A does seek to address many of those concerns. Motion 19A requests the city attorney to revise the draft ordinance on file to remove the section of the ordinance that addresses repeal. Secondly, to direct the City Planning Department with the city attorney to develop an interim solution through, for example, a zoning administrator interpretation that could provide interim guidance until a new ordinance is prepared, or it also directs that potentially a new ordinance could be prepared to bring the second dwelling unit policies into compliance with state law. And then third, the motion 19A directs the Department of City Planning to initiate a new code amendment, as well as possible amendments to the housing element of the general plan to amend those code sections from 1985 to bring us into compliance.
So thank you. I want to go to events. In the event that we move forward and adopt, let's say, 19A, one of the concerns is timing and how long it would take in order for you to present, I guess, a permanent ordinance? So what would you need from us in order to hasten that period of time? And if you could take a moment and explain what the temporary protection that's in place until you give us the permanent?
What we could do is, in the interim, what we could do is a zoning administrator interpretation that would get us through until a permanent ordinance could be adopted. That would be a staff-level interpretation of the code. And what we could do is go into the code and see which sections of those don't comply with current state law, which was commonly referred to as AP 1866. There's a provision that second units need to be administered by right, so we can go in and fix that. But there's also other provisions in terms of that you can't completely prohibit second units from your...or accessory dwelling units from your city. And overall, in the city or in geographic areas, and if you do it and go down that path, you have to make very specific findings with very specific evidence in the record. So we would not just look at the part that says making the accessory dwellings by right, but we'd have to look at the parts of the old regulations that go back to the 1980s that may prohibit it citywide in certain areas. And if you look at, we have a minimum lot size, which is that you have to have in order to have a second unit, which is beyond the minimum of the area. I believe it's one and a half times that size. That in and of itself disqualifies 88% of the parcels in the city, and in some zones, it disqualifies 100% of the parcels. So we would have to take a look to see if that meets state law, and we'd have to do the analysis on that part in the interim. Now, on the permanent, we do know that the state is considering passage of legislation. I believe there's two bills. They actually both may be approved at this moment. I don't know. They're going through the legislative...today's the last day of legislature. There's indication that the governor will sign at least one, if not both, of those bills. That creates new rules. So whatever laws, whatever rules we have in place, we'll have to comply with the new state law. We...it looks like those laws will go into effect January 1st. They will take away the city's ability to handle certain portions of this administratively. So we'll want to move through as expeditiously as possible to do a permanent ordinance as a replacement.
So we want to be teed up and ready to go a little prior to...
Right. Because the new state law says if you don't have an ordinance in place January 1st, then you must default to the state law automatically on January 1st. So there is a real limit there. So we'll want to move very quickly.
Okay.
I think the way to move most quickly is our...we need to use as our starting point the new state law and see where from the new state law that we want to have differences or vary. And I think we should make those as more limited, because if you change, if you vary from state law, you have to have very specific information in the record. And so we'll want to take a look at those quickly. We'll want to make sure we go through the process and have it full and open to the public and have the transparency that the city council has asked for. But we want to do it in an expeditious manner.
Thank you very much.
We are willing to...we have lots of important issues we're working on, but we are willing to prioritize this.
And you need to let this body know if there's anything that we can do to help you, resource-wise or whatever, so that you can fast-track this but still do it efficiently. But we would like to...I would think the body would want to be prepared for, in the event something happens at the state level, that we can still somewhat control our own fate. Before I call on Mr. Coretts, I do want to just take a moment and thank all of you for all of your hard work, because this has been an all-hands-on-deck type of effort. And know that it's greatly appreciated from the Planning Commission to Plum to all of the members, again led by Ms. Martinez and Mr. Coretts, a Krikorian, and Mr. Blumenthal. So I want to thank all of you. But my recommendation of members, my suggestion will be, again, before I call on Mr. Coretts, that we adopt 19A, that we receive and file 22, and that we take 19B for now and send it to Plum. So that's what I would suggest. So with that said, Ms. Martinez, no, Coretts, you've been bumped to third in the queue because you've... because you've spoken so much on this issue. So you're third now, so I want to go to Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make one request when you bring this back next week, because we're sending 19B back to Plum. And there's only been two cases, like I stated earlier, in which the specific permits were contested. I just want you to come back and outline what that appeal process is going to be so that people understand it and it's very clear to the opponents that are currently contesting these two permits. Is that clear? That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
And that's a very fair request, and it's important that we have a detailed analysis. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just be very brief. I want to thank the planning department for your great work on the city attorney's office as well and the work of Mr. Weezer and his Planning and Land Use Committee and everyone involved in this issue. Just want to rise and say that, especially from the testimony we've heard today, we know that accessory dwelling units are a component of increasing affordability in Los Angeles because we just have such a shortage. And that I think that we found a way to move forward in a very balanced way that looks out for our neighborhoods and really getting the hundreds, the several hundreds of these constituents, residents across the city who have been in this limbo through no fault of their own and how this will give relief to those individuals. And I'm very eager to move forward with that. I know that in my district, we always strive to seek a balance, and I think that once we take a look at how we regulate locally, we'll give those protections that understandably people across the city have real concerns with in terms of floor ratio and setbacks and size of the dwelling in relation to the size of the lot. But I think this is a great way forward, and I just wanted to rise and congratulate everyone. One of our greatest duties is to help those who are in situations, again, through no fault of their own, who have invested in our neighborhoods and overwhelmingly families who want other family members or relatives to live in the same address. So we're addressing that, and I think that's really important and job well done. And I look forward to following this as it moves forward for the local regulations. Thank you.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to rise in support of 19A, which I'm co-authoring with four other of my colleagues. And I completely understand, and I thank you for all the work that the planning department has worked on this. And I completely understand the importance of the building homes that allow for growing and extended families to live within...as Councilmember O'Farrell said, I mean, I myself lived with my grandmother, who helped raise me. And if it wasn't for my grandmother, who was able to live with us, you know, my parents working two jobs, I would be a latchkey kid. But at the same time, I want to prevent loopholes, and I think 19A, Amendment 19A, does that. It prevents loopholes, prevents loopholes from allowing developers and real estate speculators to take advantage of our land use laws. And at the same time, it does help the...a lot of the testimony that we heard today of all of those in limbo, and we were grandfathering them in. So, and I believe this is a great compromise. And by doing this, this is going to protect the unique neighborhoods that make up Los Angeles so great. And this will protect our communities as well as help our growing families. So I rise in support of 19A and ask my colleagues to join and vote aye.
And, Mr. Rue, I'm sorry I neglected to say that you were one of the makers of this motion as well. So again, a big thank you to Ms. Martinez, Mr. Paul Coretts, David Rue, Paul Krikorian, and Mr. Blumenfield. And speaking of, Krikorian, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think to sum up, this whole issue is a good example of why the state legislature shouldn't meddle with land use policy that should be left to local government to take care of, because our communities, you know, are reflected by the people who are elected to this body. But I want to echo the plaudits for having gotten through a difficult challenge that Sacramento has created for us. And I think that 19A protects neighborhood concerns that we've heard, that single-family residents want to continue to live in single-family neighborhoods, and they want to retain the character of those neighborhoods. This strikes the balance in doing that. It prevents the most onerous impacts of defaulting to state law. And at the same time, the language that we've included in 19A will protect those who've come here today and the many others who have played by the rules and are being really unfairly treated because they thought that they knew what the law was, they proceeded accordingly, and then they got the rug pulled out from under them. So my question is on the grandfathering part. The grandfathering guarantee is encompassed within the legal nonconforming use clause that's before us, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So we heard several of the members of the public say that, you know, they've been sitting on, you know, a completed permit process. They've demoed part of their property. Months or more have passed, and they're still in this limbo situation. I feel like whatever we can do to expedite their circumstance in particular would be in order. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can sever the legal nonconforming use clause and pass that as a standalone ordinance and do that next week?
Well, we have that as an urgency ordinance. So we'll bring that back amended with just the recitals, grandfathering, and then an urgency clause.
Okay, so we can do that within a matter of days.
Yes.
We don't need to wait until the large ordinance.
Yes.
Fantastic. Then full speed ahead. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, guess what? Mr. Weezer wants to be the most talkative guy to get...no, Mr. Weezer, Coretts. Coretts beat you out. No, Coretts.
Correct.
Coretts is beating you out.
I have a quick question, Mr. President. It's not going to take long. That's okay with Mr. Coretts, because he's going to take much longer than I am. But so we have the...this is a quick question. So we have the interim. Now that we've agreed that we have to do something before January to get the final ordinance, and we have item number two on 19B, which gives...we ask you to come up with a short-term solution. How quickly can we have that short-term solution? We've condensed our time schedule, and so do we...how quickly can we have that short-term solution now?
So, again, Ken Bernstein, City Planning. We would be beginning work on a zoning administrator interpretation to attempt to parse some of the issues that we've referred to today. I think at a minimum, it would take some weeks to finalize and release a ZAI. So there would be some period of, you know, whether it's not two weeks. I don't know that...you know, we will try to expedite as quickly as possible. But as Mr. Bertoni indicated, there are a number of issues to make certain that we are conforming with all of our legal requirements, as well as the changing state law. And we're also waiting on, as was indicated, action by the legislature today and potential signature by the governor on those one or both bills by the end of September. So it's a changing picture in terms of the state requirements as well.
Mr. Coretts, to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank the planning department for attempting to deal with an issue that was plopped in your lap by the state. I know that was part of the reason for the urgency, but at the same time, we've heard from many of our constituents and even noted in the L.A. Times, we had a rushed process that bypassed a real thoughtful discussion on the issue. And had we had that, I think it would have been apparent pretty quickly that we had some problems with this path that we've taken. I can tell you that a second unit of up to 1,200 square feet by right in single-family zones and hillsides is a prescription for trouble. It's a massive doubling of density. In some neighborhoods, I think that would be very problematic. And I think that 640 square feet is a granny flat and 1,200 square feet is a second home. And if we want to make R1 districts R2, we should do it through the front door and have an adequate discussion of that. But if that's not our goal, I think we should take a different process. I think in my district, most of these units will become short-term rentals unless we find ways around it. I don't know that we necessarily need that legal process. I think if we just make granny flats granny flats, that will take care of most of it. At 640 square feet or less, I think you'll wind up with granny in your granny flats or another relative or a long-term renter in an inexpensive small unit. Letting it go to 1,200 square feet, I think, is an invitation to all kinds of mischief and difficulty. So amending motions 12A and 12B will allow for that kind of debate if we want to have that. But in the meantime, they preserve the previously expressed wisdom of the council while making changes to comply with state law and court decisions. So I urge an aye vote on 12A.
19.
Excuse me, 19A, you are right. To resolve the red tape that has tied up all these homeowners who have moved forward in good faith and have been held back through no fault of their own. It'll affirm the standards the city set for granny flats years ago, and I believe with good reason then and equally good reason now. And hopefully, when we deal with 12...19B, we'll protect the integrity of our administrative process and judicial processes relative to a very limited number of cases involving these accessory units. So I thank you all for this discussion and figuring out a good policy, and I encourage an aye vote on 19A.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. And at Ms. Martinez's request, we...till Tuesday, we want to continue, or we're continuing items 40 and 41. So let me kick it back to you, Mr. Clerk, as we prepare to vote.
And, Mr. President, for clarification, Tuesday is September 6th for 40 and 41. That brings us to item 19. It's...we have a motion by yourself to move 19 as amended by 19A and to refer 19B back to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. I believe Ms. Martinez is seconding that motion, and that is now before council for a vote.
Okay, so members, let our Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and would you address item 22?
Yes, sir. That brings us to 22. There is a recommendation to receive and file that matter.
Okay, thank you. So what is before this body?
Mr. President, would you like to do that without objection?
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Very good, sir.
That was real cool, the way you did that. Yes, without objection.
Mr. President, that brings us to...there's been a request to reconsider item 1A?
Okay, let's do that. Let's open...on 1A, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And we're continuing that until when, Mr. Clerk?
September 14th, sir.
Okay. Mr. O'Farrell?
President, I had intended on calling item 26 forthwith also.
Item 26 forthwith, Mr. O'Farrell's request. So, Mr. Clerk, that brings us where? Oh, and let me just...if we could have some staff available in the event, some of our folk that...thank you all for coming down, but if they want to get particulars on what we just voted on, if we'd have maybe some planning staff available if they wanted to ask a question. So what's before this body?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Do we have any adjourning motions? Members, then would all in the council chambers please rise? Would all in the council chambers please rise for adjourning motions? If you would please rise? All please rise. Mr. Weezer? And quiet, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn today in memory of one of Mexico's and even here in the United States, one of the best-selling artists in history. Juan Gabriel passed away just a few days ago, and he had his last performance here at the Forum in Los Angeles. He wrote well over 1,000 songs for himself and other performers in a variety of styles. He sold more than 100 million records, and among his biggest hits are something that many Mexicans often sing at funerals, Amor Eterno, one of the most popular songs in Mexico, Querida, many, many others that have become songs that you hear in many Mexican homes. His album, Recuerdos, Volume Two, holds the distinction of being the best-selling album of all time in Mexico. He actually was born at Michoacan. His original name was Alberto Aguilera Valades. And he went on to...and he was left as an orphan at the young age of four. And his story is the ultimate ladder climb from the depths of poverty and despair to fame and fortune. But through it all, he was himself, and I think his audience, his fans appreciated that. He not only came from nowhere to become one of Mexico's biggest stars and artists of all time, but also kept in touch with and often told the story of what it meant to come from poverty and why he gave back so much in the areas where he spent some time in. One of the greatest contributions that Juan Gabriel did was not only through his artistry but also his lifestyle. Much has been said and written about his sexuality, and he never confirmed or denied whether he was gay or not, but his presence and his style and his responses were one that showed that you can be yourself even in a very machismo culture. And for that, he has been one of our favorites in terms of allowing people to be themselves and express themselves for who they are. Much more is needed in Mexico to improve the acceptance of LGBT people. But for Juan Gabriel to be one of the biggest stars ever to come from Mexico, certainly he has done a lot for the LGBT movement. His last performance, as I said, was at the Forum this Friday. Those in attendance witnessed magic, and fortunately, he left a body of work for all the rest of us to enjoy the magic that has Juan Gabriel forever. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'm still looking to my right. Now I'm looking to my left. Mr. Buscaino, did you have an adjourning?
Yes, thank you so much. Actually, I have two. One, of course, for the victims of the tragic earthquake in Italy, Amettrice, the region of the central coast of Italy. An hour northeast of Rome, 290 souls lost their lives to this tragic earthquake. And just this past Monday, we lit City Hall in memory of the victims with the national Italian colors, red, white, and green. And I indicated that when the world suffers, Los Angeles suffers. And in the words of Pope Francis, "The comfort of faith to the quake-ravaged regions of Italy." We were able, together with this city and a number of Italian-American organizations throughout the greater Los Angeles, come together, reflect, and pray for those victims. So I want to thank Mayor Garcetti and those general services for quickly and swiftly working together to light up City Hall in memory of the 290 so-and- grown, unfortunately, victims of the earthquake. It also gave us an opportunity to promote the Italian Red Cross to donate to those victims. This is going to be a city that needs to be rebuilt. Their libraries and churches and schools crumbled, aside from the number of residents as well. And secondly, if I may, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Anthony Nino Palma, a family friend of ours, actually related to my mom's side, passed away at the age of 66 on Friday, August 26th, in his home surrounded by his loving family. We called him Nino, Nino Palma. Commercial fisherman all his life, fished the west coast from Bellingham, Washington to the San Pedro Bay off Catalina. Very instrumental in contributing to the fishing industry when it was once thriving here in the San Pedro. Even today, he was very active in the calamari business as well. Nino survived by his wife of 42 years, Penella Palma, his daughters Mariano Scadella, Lisa Lang, Christina Alioti, and Paola Manino, his seven loving grandchildren, his three son-in-laws, a number of his brothers, Leonard Palma, Salvatore Palma, sisters Ursula Bataglia, Paula Bataglia, father and mother-in-law Paolo and Felicia Legrandi, his sisters-in-laws Lorenzo Cracchiolo, Maria Manzella Pino, and many nieces, nephews, and cousins. Yesterday, last night at the wake-up, in Ernie's, it was standing room only, reflected on his love for his family and his community and, of course, the fishing industry. So we rise in honor of Nino Palma. So we rise in honor of Nino Palma, and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, I have two adjourning motions for today. The first is for Ms. Winifred Jackson Crawford, who passed away last week, Wednesday. She, at the age of five, her family moved here to California. She graduated from Manual Arts High School, went on to LA City College, where she became a dental hygienist. She took a job with the Veterans Administration in Westwood. While she was there, she got her bachelor's from Dominguez and a master's from the University of San Francisco, eventually becoming a social worker for the Veterans Administration there in Westwood. Ms. Winnie, as we all knew her, was a giant community activist and organizer in the Hyde Park neighborhood of the 8th Council District, wasn't afraid to take on city call, often tormented multiple predecessors of mine here in the 8th District, and didn't hesitate to let me know that if she wasn't in the hospital, she would have been doing the same to me. She helped form the organization Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment or Hope. She was also a founding member of the Crenshaw Subway Coalition, and really fought hard for something that I'm very hopeful that we're able to accomplish, a Hyde Park pedestrian district that will now be accompanied by a metro rail from the airport into our community. She was the founder and leader of the Mattin Street Block Club, a fixture at the MTA Board, and just one of those individuals that was like glue in the Hyde Park neighborhood, held everybody together, and everybody knew her. We're going to miss her a whole bunch. She survived by two children and a host of grandchildren. My second adjourning motion is in memory of Joe Hicks, who was born here in Southern California in 1941. Went to Jefferson High School, where he was a track star, and then on to Cal State, Los Angeles, to be an architect, which I didn't know about him. He got discouraged in school, went on to join the Navy, and in the Navy, he became an activist, came back to Los Angeles, joined the US Organization. For a little while, he was in the Black Panther Party. For a little while, he was in the line of march for another time period. He went on later to work for the ACLU and eventually became an attorney. He served as president of our local chapter of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, where he followed former City Council Member Mark Ridley Thomas as the executive director there. He was the founder of the Multicultural Collaborative that was formed after the civil unrest to help bring people together. By the late '90s, he kind of went full circle and became a right-wing commentator on local and national television and a big charter school activist. Joe left us at the age of 75. He has four daughters and one son that survive him.
Mr. Price? Okay, so to the city clerk, if you could do, issue that adjourning to have two signatures, Mr. Harris-Dawson's and Mr. Price's, and just list, as you always do, the rest of us. There any more adjourning motions? Members, this meeting is adjourned.